He's gonna be late, but he's coming.
Yeah, but something just happened when I moved in.
It is 6:32. We're calling the Groton Town Council Committee to hold to order. We are having little technical difficulties. We're trying to get our clock set before we begin. There was a little issue. We're good now? All right. Thank you. Counselor Parker? Okay, we're gonna take roll call first. Oh, I'm sorry. It's March 11th, 2025. Roll call. We are all present except for Counselor... Is there anybody online?
No.
All right, then we have Counselor Bordalyn. Counselor Jones. And Counselor Gajewski. Who said, who has messaged me and said he is running late, but will be here. So he will take over the timer when he gets here, so.
Okay, good.
Uh, let's see. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Merritt, do you have anything to share tonight?
Uh, no.
Your microphone. Can you pull your microphone down?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina?
I have nothing to share tonight.
Okay. Counselor Russ?
No report.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
No report, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
No report.
Okay. Unfortunately, I'm gonna break it, because I have something to say. Um, I was made aware today that there was an issue on the Beautification Committee this last week, that there was a member who participated in the meeting and had not been sworn in. I had talked to Mr. Burt today about this situation. It seems as though that person was sworn in this past Friday. But I want to make it clear that the Beautification Committee is a task force. It's not an actual permanent ABC committee. Although, they are supposed to be following our charter and the rules that pertain to it. And because the person is now sworn in, I have, there is limited things that I can do at this moment. But I would like to ask Mr. Burt, is there a way that, or maybe I should ask the town clerk in the future, is there a way for us to keep track of who hasn't been sworn in and whether they're participating or not?
I do know that Lisa, my sister, had spoke with the town clerk earlier about that very thing. But I'll, I'll just double check and make sure that that's monitored.
I just want to make sure that people are fully aware that they have to be sworn in before they can participate at all. I mean, I know the Beautification Committee is a little different, that people that are in attendance, that it's more of a... People are allowed to participate when they are even not sworn in, or just members that have shown up, so. But I, I did hear about it and wanted to acknowledge this unfortunate circumstance. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes. Counselor Parker, would you like to take that? That's on page two. It's 2025-243.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 25th, 2025. I still move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Russ. Does anybody have any corrections, changes? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll take a vote. On 2025-243, February 25th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. Up next is new business. We are on 2024-1077-3, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance. This is on page 11 of our packet. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. Thank you. Item number 2024-1077, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution adopting the retaining of excess tax payments ordinance.
Second. Moved by McBride, seconded by Parker. Mr. Burt, do you want to lead on this?
Certainly. As you recall, we've had discussions, as well as a public hearing, concerning this ordinance. Significant time goes into cutting checks for refunds. It is hardly worth it for under $5. But I did determine, and I think we've discussed this before, that if you have any other outstanding payments, this will go towards them, as well as whether it's earlier years or current payments, so it does, it will get applied to other things. So it would only be refunded if there was, if it's under $5, if there was nothing else to apply it to.
Okay.
It would only be held for being refunded by us.
Okay. Does anybody have anything? I'm not seeing any hands. It is 6:37 and Counselor Gajewski has arrived. Counselor Gajewski, we are on 5A of our agenda packet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no hands, we're gonna take a vote on 2024-1077-3, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. Yes. I'm sorry. Thank you. Up next is 2025-10-3, parking fee amendment to ordinance. This is on page 13 of our packet. And before we begin, Counselor Bordalyn has arrived. It is 6:38 PM. Counselor Russ, would you like to take this one?
Yes.
And Counselor Bordalyn, we are on 5B.
Item 2025-10, parking fee amendment to ordinance. Motion to recommend a resolution to adopt the ordinance to amend Section 7-31 and 11-56.1 of the Code of Ordinances to amend parking fines.
Second. That was moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. Do you have the chief here this evening? And looking at our packet, it seems as though the only thing that truly has changed is the dollar amounts. The ordinance itself has stayed the same. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves to everyone?
Yes, I'm Chief LJ Fizaro, here to give you some thoughts on the potential increase in fines for parking. So as you know, we, and I say we collectively, have been dealing with some issues related to, you know, growth and influx of tourists, particularly in the Mystic section of town. Myself and the town manager serve as the traffic authority, the local traffic authority. This is a challenge for us on a regular basis throughout the year. What was once a seasonal problem has turned into a year-long problem. You know, I think we're all celebrating the great things there is to do in Mystic and all the wonderful tourist attractions that part of the area has, as well as the restaurants, the shops, all that sort of stuff. We have free parking in Mystic. I want to, I want to repeat that. There's free parking in Mystic up to two hours. That, I am told, we utilize our community police officers to go out there to survey the areas. We've been doing a lot of enforcement to highlight that. This past year, we've already issued 477 tickets since October. I'm sorry, during the fiscal year, and about 77% of those are being paid. You know, there's, there's gotta be a turnover of the available parking in Mystic. We understand there's challenges between residents that need sufficient parking themselves. Also, the businesses that are bringing in customers or patrons for their different establishments. There needs to be that turnover, that two hours. So we've dealt with this. We've, through the good graces of the council, the RTM, we implemented a new parking system back in October, which has netted some significant results. We've been out there doing a lot of enforcement. We're hoping that the raising of the fine will be a bit of a deterrent, but also will make people rethink what they're doing out there. If they're gonna park, they've got that two-hour time limit. After that, you gotta move on or find a location. And there are locations on both our side of the river, as well as the Stonington side, where they can park for longer durations of time. So I would, I would highly recommend that the council enact this. I think it will be overall good for our enforcement ability, but also serves a deterrent effect. I know there are folks out there that, some will object to this. We're telling you that, that there's a problem. We need the tools to address that problem. This is one of those tools. And it's in line with what Stonington just enacted. So rather than them pushing over their folks onto our side of the bridge to take up parking spots, we want to be consistent with that and maintain that similar posture when it comes to fines and enforcement. And we've been doing that. I'm happy to answer questions. I brought some information with me. You know, the last time we went through this was in 2018. We did make a similar change. We extended the time that a person had to pay their fines from seven days to 14 days. We also moved it from $10 to $20, because at that time, we also realized it was not, it was, it wasn't prohibitive. People were much more willing to pay that, that $10, and now they're willing to pay that $20 to park somewhere all day long with little or no risk, and the area just can't handle that. It needs a turnover of those parking spaces. This is one of those ways that we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thanks. Just a couple of questions for my own clarification. What's the difference between one and two? One's a $100 fine and two is a $50 fine?
Uh, that would be for a fire lane.
Number two is the fire lane?
That's right. The higher fine is a fire lane.
Higher, no, higher fine. So number one's for fire lane and two is just a regular?
Yeah, a $100 fine would be for the fire lane.
Okay, thanks.
Just, just of the 477 tickets, I told you we issued, just to put it in perspective, eight of those were for fire lane violations. So generally speaking, if someone's there, they move along when our officers tell them to. If they remain, then they, they're subject to that fine. But only eight of those 477 were for fire lane violations.
And what, is there any recourse for if you don't get it within 30 days?
Sure. And we, so after the first seven days, what we do now is we send out a letter to the offender. Part of this parking management solution that we bought enables us to do that pretty quickly as a reminder, saying, hey, you need to pay it. After a certain amount, they will, they will not be able to register their vehicle if they don't pay it. So that's one of the, another feature, and that's under, you know, Connecticut general statutes allows us to do that. So if, if they don't, it will go to finance where they, you know, they'll, they'll not, they'll know that they haven't paid, but it'll also go to the Department of Motor Vehicles where they'll not be able to register their vehicle.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to mention, it's probably good for the public to know, there is an appeals process with a hearing officer should they feel like they were unjustly ticketed.
Yeah, and that starts actually with the issuance of the ticket, where they've, they've got a barcode or a QR code. They can scan it. You know, they can plead not guilty. They can, they can ask for a hearing. As the town manager said, we can do some adjudication at our level, and then it would go to that hearing officer to, to listen to them.
So I'm looking at the actual, I don't know, the wording in our packet on page 14. And I see that it's highlighted where the 100 turns into 200 if you're late, and then the 50 turns into 100 if you're late. But I'm not actually seeing where it's, maybe I'm missing it at some, where it actually says, spells it out, the difference in these violations.
You know, the first, if I'm, if I'm looking at the same document, Madam Mayor, would be the very beginning, where it says the town's parking violations would increase from 20 to 50 for all parking violations, except for fire lane violations, which would increase from 50 to 100. Subsequently, these fines would double to 100 and 200 respectively.
We don't have what you have. Ours is different. We have the ordinance, but it doesn't, maybe I'm missing it. Maybe I'm not seeing it.
Let me pull up the full ordinance. This is a portion of the actual full thing. This is how it was done last time.
Well, because it has like sections, and it says 7-31, and then it has a section 11-56.
That's just, that's not the resolution.
I just want to, Counselor Parker?
Do you, to, Mr. Fizaro, do the tickets have that on there? Is there listing on the tickets?
Are, are the numbers, like the sections listed on the tickets, violations?
If you look at the full ordinance, like, under Section 7-31, if you actually look at it, oh, I just lost my place. They specify if it's for, which one's parking, or fire lane versus regular under the ordinance.
So the $100 is the fire lane?
Yeah, the, yes. Section 7-31, if you go to it, it's under our Chapter 7 of Code of Ordinances, Fire Prevention and Protection.
Okay. I just want to make it clear, because in here, it just says parked in violation of the law.
Right. And they're using the template from last time we did it.
All right.
Yeah, all the rest of the ordinances stay in place. It's just a small change within it.
Right, because I, that's...
If you look at the actual thing, you'll know.
The big, the bigger picture shows it all.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry, there's a question reserved?
Nope, I think Mr. Burt answered it. And let me ask you, how are the parking ticket machines working right now? The machines that...
We have four of them now, handheld devices that they're, they're, like I said, we've... So just to give you a little idea of where we're at, from, if you go back to, let's say, 10 years ago, we issued 47 parking tickets in 2015. You know, fast forward to 2023, we issued 287. Calendar year, 24, 600, 598. And from the start of this year till today, or I'm sorry, till the 10th, so yesterday, 157. So we've, we've, it increases the time that an officer or CSO can do it. It also provides all the documentation. They're working great. You know, our officers take them out when they have that patrol. Or if there's, if they experience problems in other parts of town, they'll certainly take it with them. But our community service officers have been doing a lot of enforcement.
Thank you. And just to clarify, on the ticket itself, it has the violation, and it says how much they are, correct?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pacina?
One quick thing, slightly off topic. I'd like to thank you and your staff for some old-fashioned police work. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, I'm glad that was not a parking issue, but certainly a great, great work by our officers and detectives.
All right, Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Manager Burt. Circle back to the mayor, or to Manager Burt. Just circle back on this session. It says Section 7-31, notice of violate. But it says, if you read in further, it says whatever any police officer finds any vehicle in violation of Section 7-30. Can you pull up 7-30 for us?
It's sort of the start of that. The 7-30 is parking within prohibited exception, or within prohibited, and then no person shall park or permit any motor vehicles stand in fire lane. That's the intro to it, and 7-31 is the fine amount. So 7-30 is the header. 7-31 is notice of violation and fines. So that is correct.
So I, so just, so I'm understanding this correctly. Section one of our packet is for parking tech, if you look at our packet on page 14, section one is for fire lanes?
Correct.
And then section two is for just regular parking violations?
Correct. Yes. And 7-30, our current ordinance under 7-31, it also references 7-30 as the, as the intro part of that ordinance for the parking prohibition for fire lanes. So this is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-10-3, parking fee amendment to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening. Up next is 2025-28, Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. This is in our packet on page 15. Counselor Pacina, would you like to take that?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-228, Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Motion to recommend a resolution to adopt the 2025 Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan to be issued, to be used as a guide document, guiding document for the town of Groton to improve community connectivity.
Second. Moved by Pacina, seconded by Russ. Okay, so this is the majority of our packet tonight. 214 pages.
I know, I'm sorry.
So good evening.
It's a big project.
Would you like to introduce yourselves and give us your presentation? Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Berry. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. Joining this evening is Tom Olson, who is part of the Complete Streets Committee. This is Nicole DeTora from FHI Studios, and this is Rory Jacobson from FHI Studios. And joining us remotely is Francisco Gomes, who is also with FHI Studios. So just a real brief background, because this is about a two-hour presentation. I'm kidding. We engaged FHI Studios back in 2024 to update our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. The last time it had been done was 2005. And one of the driving factors for that was that when we did the 22, the 2022 recreational needs assessment, one of the highest identified needs was improved community connectivity. So this, updating the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan was kind of a, a simple next step for us. So this has been a project that's been going on for over a year. There's been a significant amount of community engagement. The process involved looking at existing information and incorporating into, into recommendations on improvements that could be made within the existing conditions and future improvements. And I think at this time, I'm going to turn it over. Oh, and I do want to just make one adjustment to this. I'm, I'm not asking for the council this evening to adopt this. This is a presentation only. There are a few departments within the town that still need to review this, so I will be coming back after we've had those comments and, and asking at that time that this be adopted, because this will be a document that, this will be a guiding document that both the Planning Department, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation will be using over the next 10 years or so.
Point of information? Yes. Madam Mayor, would you like us to remove our second and motion? No, we're gonna, I think we should do a postponement at the end to a date specific.
Point of information?
Your question?
We don't have a specific time. What, when would you suggest that this happens? Because if he has to work with other departments...
Mr. Burt, how long do you think it will take the other department to review? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Berry?
The Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to review this on March 25th. So I'm guessing it would be sometime, based on the comments, I'm guessing it'll be sometime in April.
Our first cow is sort of filling up in April, so I suggest the second cow of April, if that's all right. Which is...
Point of information?
Your question?
Why would they not withdraw their motion for now and then just postpone the whole event? Just a question.
I think if we just postpone, it'll just stay on the agenda and be scheduled properly. It'll definitely go on that agenda. Either way, I mean, if you want to withdraw it, I mean, it could happen that way. Either way, I think it's acceptable. I'm sorry. You wanted, let's just continue the presentation. Yes? Counselor Gajewski, you have a, you have a question?
No, let's just continue.
So good.
Please do.
Is it turned on? Is there a turn on that? That was me. Try again. Try again. Yep, that was you.
So, you know, as Mark said, the purpose of this plan is really to identify infrastructure that the town can, can install to improve walking and biking throughout town for all variety of users. You know, a big focus of this was also thinking about ways to improve connections within the town's parks, open space, and recreational resources as well. Project schedule, as Mark said, you know, we've been at this for about a year. We started back in early 2024 with our existing conditions. We did quite a bit of community engagement, a public workshop in September. You know, this, this winter, we worked on developing the plan and the concepts, and, you know, we're here now with you. We had a public presentation back in February of the plan as well. So about a year-long process so far. And I mentioned community engagement. We've done quite a bit of community engagement. We launched an online survey that received over 600 responses. The committee was really great in pushing the survey out to the community. We've done focus group meetings, you know, smaller scale, mini workshops. We did our large community workshop and presentation. And, you know, overwhelmingly, we've heard that people just want, you know, safer and more comfortable bike and pedestrian facilities throughout the town. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole to talk about existing conditions.
Thank you. So we started this process with a review of existing conditions. And to start that, we looked at all relevant plans and studies that have been conducted for the town and for the region. There's been a lot of planning work done over the past several years, and our plan intends to build upon...
Point of, I rise to a question of privilege.
Yes, you're correct.
Could we ask them to please be quiet in the galley?
Yes. I'm sorry. We can hear people in the galley. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, you may continue.
Thank you. So we started this process by reviewing relevant plans and studies that have been conducted for the town and for the region. There's been a lot of planning work done over the past several years. And our work intends to build upon these prior recommendations and plans, and also provide the town with a document that takes all these ideas and puts them into one place. As Mark mentioned earlier, the last bike-ped plan for the town was produced in 2005, which was 20 years ago. And a lot has changed in terms of bike-ped planning and complete streets planning since then. So having an updated document will certainly be useful for the town. We mapped all the existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities in town. This map is showing existing side paths, bike lanes, multi-use pathways, and trails. There is currently a side path on Long Route 12, a side path on a small segment of Route 1 near the community center. There are bike lanes on Thomas Road and newly installed bike lanes on Groton Long Point Road. We also have the GNS Trolley Trail, which is a multi-use pathway that accommodates bicyclists and pedestrians. From this mapping, it is apparent that there are very few on-road bicyclist facilities and multi-use pathways in town. But Groton does have a good amount of trails that accommodate hikers and mountain bikers. We also mapped existing public sidewalks. Groton does have a fairly extensive sidewalk network, but there are gaps in this, and some of these gaps are significant. Along Route 1, there are areas where there is sidewalk lacking on both sides of the roadway or one side of the roadway, and other routes such as Route 184 or Route 117 are really lacking a sidewalk network altogether. We also mapped five-year crash activity between 2019 and 2023. And what we find, and what is typical to see, is that there are higher concentrations of crashes on corridors that have high traffic volumes, high traffic speeds, and at intersections. And in Groton specifically, you can see that the western side of town, specifically along Route 12 and the western segments of Route 1 have higher crash concentrations. There's also some hotspots in places like Mystic and along Route 184. And in these locations, if there's also sidewalk gaps missing, this will sometimes force pedestrians on the road. So those are areas where there's specific concern for safety. When we mapped traffic volume and traffic speeds, as well as crash concentrations, we developed what's called the roadway stress map. And this essentially shows which corridors would be high-stress for a bicyclist or pedestrian who's in the roadway, especially if there's not a designated facility for that bicyclist or pedestrian. So higher-stress, higher-stress roadways are shown in orange and red. And those would be corridors that have high traffic speeds, high traffic volumes, or high crash concentrations. Whereas the lower-stress corridors that are shown in green and aqua would have lower traffic volumes, lower traffic speeds, or lower, and lower traffic. would have lower-traffic volumes, lower-traffic speeds, or lower, and lower-traffic, and lower-traffic activity. Sorry. So these, this map helps us determine the stress for the user, but also the appropriate facility that we would recommend or the preferred recommendation. So on a high-stress roadway, where it would be stressful for bicyclists or pedestrians to share the road, we'd want to separate them with a facility such as a side path. Whereas on a lower-stress roadway, where speeds, traffic volumes, and crashes are not as much of a concern, a user of the roadway would feel more safe or more comfortable, and a shared roadway might be the better preferred recommendation. And lastly, we did an analysis of trip attractors and generators. So this map shows essentially locations where there's a high demand for bicycle and pedestrian facilities based on locations such as K-12 schools, universities, parks, playgrounds, community resources such as Town Hall, Community Center, Senior Center, libraries, major employment locations, areas of high-population density, and retail corridors. So this is just showing where there might be more pedestrian and bicyclist activity generated or trips attracted to. So the idea is to connect areas within these hotspots and also between these hotspots.
Okay, I'm going to pass it back to Rory.
Great. Thanks, Nicole. So I'm going to just run through some of what's included in the plan. We developed what we call a Bike Facilities Toolbox. This provides guidance for facility planning, facility selection, and then guidance for a variety of different bicycle facility types. It also has required standards and advisory guidelines, so things like conditions for use, the facility width that's needed, where it has to be located in the right-of-way, and then what types of pavement markings, what signage is needed. We also developed a Pedestrian Facilities Toolbox. And this has recommended pedestrian facilities and features. You know, these are things like your sidewalks, your curb ramps, crosswalks, within, you know, within the community. And guidance documents that we utilized, we reviewed state and federal standards and best practices, you know, things like pavement markings and ADA requirements. But then there's other guidance documents that are more advisory. But we did utilize a wide variety of sources and made sure to utilize the most up-to-date sources that we could in developing the plan. So recommended bicycle facility types. We did identify five bicycle facility types that would be suitable here in Groton. The first one is shared roadway. So this is, this is a facility where the bicycles share the roadway with vehicles. This is ideal for, you know, your low-volume, low-speed neighborhood roads. And they include things, you've probably seen them, sharrows. And this just alerts the driver that they can expect bicyclists to be on the roadway with them as well. Other facilities include bike lanes. So this is a dedicated lane, typically in the shoulder, dedicated to bicyclists. And these, these are more suited for moderate speeds, moderate-volume roadways. And this photo here is in Thomas Road in Groton. So you have these already in town. Buffered bike lanes provide a little bit more protection. There's about a one-to-two-foot buffer between the lane and the bike lane. And these are also appropriate for those moderate, moderate-speed and moderate-volume roadways. Then we also identified areas where side paths might be suitable. And you also, you have side paths in town already. Route 12 in Groton is a great example of that. So these are facilities that are, you know, they're two-way shared, so bicyclists and pedestrians can utilize them. And, you know, they're typically placed where a sidewalk might be, and there's usually either a curb or a landscape buffer between the road and the side path. Then finally, we identified locations for shared-use pathways. And you have these in town as well. The photo there is the GNS Trolley Trail. These are, again, two-way shared facilities between bicyclists and pedestrians. These are located away from roadways. So these are great for recreational use, and they're typically, you know, constructed with paved or stone-dust material. And so, you know, the context is really important for all these, these different facility types. You know, ideally, we'd have low-stress, low-risk facilities. And we find that, you know, the, the lower the stress level, the greater the comfort. But, you know, in the example of the shared-use path, you know, the lower the stress level and the greater the comfort also comes with an added cost. So all those things need to be balanced when identifying in these recommendations. So we did utilize the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Facility Selection Guides. We used their guidance in this. This is completed in 2023, and we actually helped them develop these guidelines. So we're very familiar with these and their uses. And, you know, this guides the selection of bike facilities based on volume and speed to identify what might be appropriate and suitable.
And then I think with that, Francisco, you're up.
Yes, thank, thank you, Rory. So I'm going to talk about what the plan recommends across the town and how much that is likely to cost if we're built out to 100%. First of all, what we planned is a comprehensive network across the town that connects all of the town's parks and open spaces and trail system. A focus and emphasis on this plan, in addition to complete streets, is also trails planned with the intention of better connecting the town's trail system. And so this plan would do exactly that. The emphasis of our recommendations are on roads and corridors that provide connectivity across town and between areas. So we are not recommending bicycle facilities or sidewalks on every road in town. They're simply not needed on some of your quieter, local neighborhood roadways. But you do need them on your arterial roadways and collector roadways and the roadways that connect across town. And east-west across town, you really only have a couple of routes where that's possible. So we've developed recommendations for exactly that. As Rory introduced earlier, we have a range of facility types that we've recommended: bike lanes, side paths, multi-use paths, trails, shared roadways, and of course sidewalks as well. If we go to the next slide. We, in addition to that, those bike and pathway facilities, and emphasis on this work, because this is complete streets work, is to improve accommodations for pedestrians and pedestrians alone. And so we did a complete sidewalk analysis. Those orange lines identify the areas where there are sidewalks lacking on either one or both sides of the, of the street. So we've recommended infill to strategically link those sidewalk networks so that someone could walk across town, or in some cases even down the road where there are completely sidewalks missing. Next slide. As to how we implement that, this is the most important aspect of the plan, is to provide you with strategic guidance as to where to start, what areas and corridors are a priority. And so if we go to the next slide. In, in developing our implementation recommendations, the first thing we did, and this relates back to the heat map or the demand map that Nicole explained, the first thing that we did was to prioritize these corridors and segments based upon the demand that is in the area for bicycle and pedestrian trips. So the darker the red color, the more demand there is in those areas because of the level of bicycle and pedestrian activity and the connections that those corridors would provide. As you get further north, above 95, along the Gold Star Highway, that demand reduces simply because the density, residential density is lower, commercial density is lower, there are less destinations. So the demand is one aspect of this. If we go, if we move on next, the next consideration when we think about phasing and where to start is what we call the ease of implementation. That is based upon our recommended facility type, whether it be a pathway or bike lane, a shared roadway. How difficult will it be and how long will it take to implement that? And there are a few different things that factor into that. Foremost would be the cost of the facility, but also if there are any potential property acquisitions or easements required, that can be a time-consuming process. If there are substantial construction impacts, that takes time to plan, design, build, and finance. And so we've developed a map that indicates the areas that we think are the low-hanging fruit, things that you can accomplish in the near term at a low cost with a higher ease of implementation. Those are the darkest, green areas. So that combined with the demand, we really layer those two on top of each other, which brings us to our next map, which is the recommended phasing. And so here's our recommended phasing guide. The darkest blue indicates the things that we recommend doing earliest in the first phase. We've divided this up into four phases, and we've divided each of the corridors up into segments. So each segment has a segment number. Phase one items are, start with the number one, followed by the segment number, 1.1 through 1.10, or whatever it may be. And we've attached the costs associated with that for each one of those segments and for the phase as a whole. And in total, the combined bicycle facility and pathway projected costs are about $29.5 million for a comprehensive network that would connect the town, townwide. Now, those are typical cost estimates based upon standard unit measurements. We did not do a level of design on all of these corridors that would enable a more detailed cost. So that cost certainly could be higher. We did build in a contingency factor 20% into this cost. So we, we think it's a very good number for planning purposes. And then when we take a look at, if we move on to the next slide, take a look at what we've recommended for sidewalks, we've also done the same for sidewalks. So we provided a phasing plan. In the case of sidewalks, we've recommended three phases. The darker the color indicates recommendations that should occur or should be implemented sooner. And Route 1, in this case, is highly prioritized. And that is because the number of destinations up and down the corridor, the limited number of east-west routes you have, it's basically Route 1 and the Gold Star Highway that are continuous east-west. And then, as Rory explained, the stress, and Nicole explained, the stress factor and the risk associated with walking in the roadway along that corridor. So all told, in phase one, it's about $3 million worth of improvements to build out that sidewalk network on Route 1. In total, $12.5 million to build out the sidewalk network across these areas. And if we go to our next slide. In addition to this high-level planning work, we were asked to provide design concepts for up to five corridors. And Route 1 was selected as a corridor. If we go to the next slide, I can show you those five corridors. Route 1 was identified as a priority corridor by our Complete Streets Committee. Because of the length of that corridor and the complexity of it, we broke it up into three segments: west, central, and east. And in addition to that, Route 117 and 215 were also identified as priorities. So for each of these corridors, we developed conceptual design plans. And if we go to the next slide, I can show you what one of those looks like. And here's an example. We've got approximately 30 sheets that look like this, where we, and these, these aren't engineering documents that you could build from, but they are what you would start the engineering process from. And they have enabled us to identify the types of intersections, improvements that would be required, right-of-way constraints or right-of-way available space, in most cases, actually. Any easements that may be required, any other infrastructure improvements such as grading constraints, grading improvements, utility relocations, bridge or culvert improvements. And, and that level of detail, which enables us to first establish whether or not the project, as we've envisioned it, is feasible, in which case we have established that all of the recommended facilities for those corridors are feasible, of course, at a cost, and these things take time. But for these specific projects, we've been able to develop a much more detailed cost estimate. And these drawings, in addition to the cost estimates and all of the planning work that supports it, would provide for a very strong grant application for funding of one of these projects. And if we go on to the next slide. And here, here's, here's just an example of a project that we've, we've done the work for. We've got to the point where really it needs some funding, and we think is a great project to implement. And this would be Route 215, where you have available space on the roadway and some fairly wide shoulders, and it's a, it's an excellent candidate for buffered bike lanes. But we've got multiple examples of projects that just seem like they really want to happen, and it's a natural fit. And, and we've done the work to demonstrate that and support that. And I talked earlier about, you know, the costs associated with all this grants. The, the cost for the, the five segments of the concept plans are $15 million. That's, $15 million is within the total $42 million that I discussed earlier. So the, the total cost estimates for bikes and sidewalks are inclusive of these projects. But these three corridors, these five concept plans alone are, would be $15 million worth of improvements to build them out as we design them. And if we go to the next slide. And I've, so I'm going to talk about grants in a little bit. But first, I want to talk about our demonstration projects. We were tasked with doing three demonstration projects, and these are intended to be proof-of-concept-type projects and also community-building efforts. The first one we've completed already. We, we completed that last September, I want to say. And that was at the former Claude Chester School. And we've designed two other projects that have not yet been installed. So if we go to the Claude Chester School project. This was a really fun project. One of our committee members had the idea of doing a traffic garden. And we, we located a perfect spot for it. It's on a relatively unused playground at a school that's closed. And we turned it into a miniature little city and roadway network that kids can practice bicycling on and practice their bicycle and traffic safety skills as a bicyclist. Now, this was a volunteer effort. It was done entirely in one day. And FHI, FHI donated all the colored paint. We had a bunch of colored paint in our office left over from similar projects. And I think it was a tremendous success earlier, early in the project that got everyone excited about bicycling in Groton. The next two projects are, you know, a little more pragmatic. They are traffic-calming pedestrian safety projects. And these are, once again, demonstration projects or what we'll call a quick-build-type project. On Depot Road, we've recommended choking down an intersection to slow turning movements and provide crosswalks to make it a safer environment for pedestrians. And on Binloss Road, we've recommended some traffic calming that would slow that intersection down, some of the turning speeds. There is a decent amount of pedestrian and bicyclist activity. If you really squint and look hard enough, you can see in the intersection that the shadows created by three cyclists riding right there in the lane. So these measures are measures that the town could implement at a very low cost. It's just paint and some PVC delineator posts that can be mounted on the ground. And they could be put out for a year. And if the improvements are successful, they could be made permanent. Depot Road is, has been funded for design. Will be entering into a design process to provide bicycle facility connections from Depot over to South Road and to the Trolley Trail. And this project could potentially be integrated on a permanent basis if it's demonstrated to be successful. And the same is true of Binloss Road, where we did a similar project in Simsbury, Connecticut. And it worked so well and was so well-received and reduced traffic speeds that the town made it, within six months, they did a permanent installation. And if we go to the next slide. Funding sources. So I was eager to talk about where you might be able to find money to support this work. We've compiled a comprehensive list of grant funding sources, and this is one page of two or three pages. There are a lot of active sources. There are a lot of active sources right now for bicycle, pedestrian, traffic safety, and complete streets improvements from a variety of sources, from both state and federal sources, and we certainly hope that those revenue streams continue to flow. So I think right away you could potentially advance one of these projects through one of these grant programs, or at least apply for such. And next slide. In addition to, and related to this work, although not technically part of the plan itself, we were hired by the town to develop wayfinding and branding for the Crosstown Greenway. And this is a really exciting project. The town has a state-designated greenway that travels across east-west and north-south across the town. It's that dashed line you see in the logo. And the greenway lacks any sort of wayfinding signage or branding. So we've developed branding, which is a logo, and signage design for the greenway. It has a number of partner organizations, including Land Trust. It's intended to accommodate a wide range of users. And so we've designed both on-street signage, and if we go to the next slide, and welcome signage at some of the trailheads and at the various open spaces that are connected by the greenway. So we provided the town with a complete sign design package with specifications for each of these sign types. And more importantly, if we go to the next slide, a layout for each segment of the corridor that identifies specific sign types and where, what those signs should point to, in which direction, which users are accommodated. So this is a very exciting project. We've developed cost estimates for this as well on a budget, and we're excited to see this potentially move forward very soon. Next. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to open up to any questions or comments you may have.
Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. First off, I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work and effort. I definitely have been following this. I was really excited to go, you know, into Ledger when they had their ribbing-cutting ceremony for their trail there that, you know, will connect eventually, you know, through the Grotton side and Crosstown Trails and all the stuff. I just, to me, I feel, you know, we look at our community, and there's so much where, you know, you see these pocket neighborhoods built in the 80s where they just plowed the trees down and built the houses, and they never thought about sidewalks, trees, you know, worrying about heat or anything, you know, and it's, you can see it, and we have that in our town. And it just, as a person who's trying to become more active, you know, myself, I find it hard to get out of my neighborhood. I live right on the border of the city. I live in the city of Grotton, but a stone's throw away from the town. So the trail that runs right along Caffin-Polnaski, like it's, I'm one, like, feet away from being in the town. With that, my first question is, so this study did show some pictures and things of the city, but then when you guys did the mapping plan, it did not include the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. The city of Grotton has developed its own bicycle route network, and we've made a point to ensure that the facilities planned for the town connect to that network, so that it's an interconnected network. The greenway, however, does connect through the city, and the recommendations, the wayfinding recommendations we provided for the greenway include both the town and the city.
Yeah. For me, again, like, I think this is, it's a no-brainer. I mean, how do we fund it is my, you know, always the big issue, right? The concept is, to me, is no-brainer. It's about, you know, we looked at, like, COVID and the accessibility and being able to walk, and we talk about people being able to be more active. We need to provide safe environments for people to just be able to walk out their front door and go for two or three miles and come back. And there's a lot of sections of towns, of this town, that you can't do that without getting off, you know, onto a main road without a sidewalk. It's definitely something we should consider. As it's stated, there's a priority to increase more housing because there's a shortage, and I think you can't do that without doing this. Like, you know, they're one, they have to go together. So with that, I just think this is a great starting point. I'm interested to see where this goes. I have a limited time to speak, so I could just go on and on about how great I think the concept is, obviously the funding. But it is a public health concern to make sure people have ABA compliance as well as accessibility. We have a thriving economy here with EB, the naval base, and that connectivity is so important. Outside of my house, we have Rainville, there's a hill right there, and there's no sidewalk, and all the people come from the parking lot, and they walk up the road in the road because it's the shortest path up. And I was told it's a state road from the city side and that, you know, the city would have to fund, the state would have to fund it. But again, there's so much here, and I think we have a great opportunity. I'm all for biking, walking, outdoor accessibility. So I just can't thank you guys enough for the hard work that you guys put into it and the deep detail. I spent a lot of time going through this and watching this kind of come to fruition for quite some time. So I just want to thank all of you that are involved, Mark, everybody that's here. And I'll take my next time after, but I just wanted to open up and just say thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Merritt?
Yes. I've had some complaints about this probably a year, maybe two years ago, and I'd like to speak to the involvement of the state with your plans. Have you spoken to them in particular about Route 649?
Yes, sir. That would be the next step in the process. We do have some scope to do stakeholder outreach, and DOT being a very important stakeholder in this. So the next step in our process would be to, if the town is interested, would be to engage with the DOT, in which we have some open lines of communication there because we do, we have a road safety audit contract that we do for the DOT, is to have a meeting with them and to really make them aware of this plan and of the recommended improvements, and see if we can't get them on board and things moving with respect to some of the state corridors, of which many, many of your roadways, whether it's Route 1, 117, or 215, are state roadways.
Yes, I understand that, but are you aware of the fact of what travels on Route 649? Tractor trailers?
Yes, sir.
With west coast mirrors that come out into the proximity of the bicyclist right alongside the truck?
And because of that, what we've recommended along that corridor is a side path, is to accommodate bicycles off of the roadway, because of the nature, the traffic, the volume, and the speeds.
And that would include easement rights of property owners?
So we have not done conceptual plans for 649. We did that for Route 1, whereby we identified all of the rights-of-way constraints and areas where an easement or a sliver-taking would be required. But we would expect that there would be similar needs and constraints along that corridor.
I have a little concern about the bumpouts on Depot Road, but I think it remains to be seen with the final plan, because there is an industry down there and undeveloped property in the area. Plus, there's Bluff Point, which gets an awful lot of traffic in the summer.
And that's, it's an excellent point you make, and that is the precise reason why it would be advantageous to do a demonstration project, to see how well it works. That particular design is intended to not obstruct through traffic in any way. It's also intended to allow for ease of turning movements for, like UPS trucks. Larger vehicles would have to take a wider turn and go a lot slower, but any vehicle that's currently traveling down that roadway would still be able to make those turns, just much slower.
Okay. I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you. This is a huge undertaking, and I appreciate all of your work. I also have a little bit of concern with state roads. Most of the roads that you identified here are state, or a lot of them are state roads. Will the state pay for any of that?
The state's policy has been, generally speaking, when they reconstruct a roadway, is that the town, and even if the state pays for the pedestrian improvements, the town then incurs the maintenance costs associated with that.
I'm sorry.
So let's set the construction part of this aside. There would definitely be a maintenance responsibility on the town on any state roadway for any facility that's located off of the road. So that's the first item. Now, the DOT adopted something... Yes, yes, go ahead.
Can you repeat what you said? So if the, if the town, if the state is willing to actually build it, then the town would be in charge of maintaining it? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes. And that's basically how it works across Connecticut with anything behind the curve, any pedestrian facilities or pathways, that it's the local municipality that's responsible for maintaining it.
So if you looked at Route 1, you're proposing a side path. So you would take the existing sidewalks and make them bigger and make them the side paths. Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. Yeah, that's the concept. Correct.
Okay. There's a lot here to digest, and again, I appreciate it. I really appreciate the fact that you put in so many options for grant funding potentials, because, like, everyone right now, we're looking at a budget, and we're looking at what we can and can't spend. So I definitely appreciate that as well. I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with this. I just don't know what that looks like in the next step. I mean, I see what you're proposing. We would need to find the funding and move forward on that, so thank you for the information.
And if I may, just to build upon your, or better respond to your question about DOT, the DOT adopted something two years ago called, in 2013, called a Complete Streets Design Criteria. And we helped them develop a component of that. That was the chart that Rory talked about for bike facilities. But their Complete Streets Criteria is a little bigger than that. It basically requires, they have a policy now that requires them, whenever they're making substantial improvements to a corridor, requires them to evaluate the feasibility of providing or improving bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So they have to try to include that in the scope of the program, and there's a process internally they have to go through if they don't do that, to justify why it was not considered or included.
Well, I would say of your recommended bicycle and pedestrian network, I'm looking at page 28 of your plan, the good majority of that is state roads.
Correct.
Just something to consider. How many people go up and down 117 that we're looking at, putting that, including that? Are there a lot of people who drive, or who ride a bike up and down 117?
What, so...
117.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know, how we identify some of these corridors and how we prioritize those. So a corridor like 117, it provides north-south connectivity. Your senior center is located on it. It connects a number of open space resources in the town. It is used recreationally by some cyclists. And what we know is that the bicycle use right now is not that high. And that's really true across the town. While you do see recreational cyclists and some kids out, bicyclist activity levels aren't that high. And a part of it is because there aren't great facilities to accommodate them. Now, the demand, we know there's some latent demand there, but I don't want to suggest that if you build bicycle facilities, there'll be thousands of people out on your streets. And we still have winters, and you still have big hills. But this is really about better accommodating the people that are already using the facilities or really interested in being able to get around town in something other than a vehicle and to do so safely. And there's equal emphasis on pedestrians, for which you have an even greater demand. So with respect to 117, depending which map you're looking at, you can see that the southernmost segment, close to the senior center of Route 1, is the highest priority. And that's because that segment would provide the most value, because that's where most of the demand for trips is. There's just more destinations down there. And so we focus those efforts in those, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2, on the improvements that are going to yield the most value, that will accommodate the most people, and at the same time can be done in the most cost-effective way. So your cost per mile in Phase 1 is a fraction of the cost per mile in Phase 4, because those Phase 1 and Phase 2 items are the highest-value improvements. A network like this with the pathways, the bike facilities, and the sidewalks, a network like this could take 30 years or more to build, but you have to start somewhere. And so we've laid out, we've laid out a systemic approach to doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could add to that, I think Route 117 is also part of the tri-town trail master plan, which goes from Grotton, Ledger, Preston?
Yes.
So that's more of a recreational plan that was in place, and there was prior conceptual planning for that route. So that was part of the intention to provide bicycle and pedestrian access up and down from Bluff Point to the Ledger Town Line.
Rosa?
Yeah.
All right. Counselor Pacino?
Great plan. I like a lot, through the mayor. Great plan. I like a lot. I do have concern with the bumpouts, because it does reduce the roadway to 24 feet. And I'd like, I definitely, when you do the demonstration, I would like us all to get an invite. I want to be standing there watching that myself. You're going to do a live demonstration with vehicles, I assume, right? Is that what you're discussing, I mentioned?
Yeah. If I could respond to that real quick. A demonstration, we call it a demonstration project, but it's really intended to be in place for a few months. So we'd get fully tested.
Okay. So that's the demonstration. As long as there's no accidents in the few months, we can say it's a success.
Right, right. If the town doesn't receive complaints every day that people just can't make the turns through there, and it's not creating more problems than we're trying to solve, then yeah, then it's a success. Correct.
Okay. It just, it just seems to me that, you know, somebody's sitting at that, at that traffic line, at the stop sign, and somebody wants to take a right, and they gotta take a wide right, they can't. I mean, they gotta wait for that car to go.
For a passenger vehicle, all passenger vehicles would be able to stay within their lane without encroaching upon another lane. It's just the larger trucks that would need to turn a little wider. And that already happens at a lot of four-ways through town on local neighborhood streets. 24 feet, that's the width of two highway lanes. So, you know, we have highway vehicles passing each other at 70 miles an hour within 24 feet without an issue. And so I think we can do it here on Depot Road, particularly given that all of the cars are stopping at the four-way stop.
All righty. I'm looking forward to see how this gets implemented. Thank you very much.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the group. Thank you for presenting this. Couple of questions. You did say something about property acquisitions. Did we look at how many we potentially may have to do? Is it the town will have to get property acquisitions and the easements? Number two, when you calculated your accidents report, did you get that from the crash depository? And did you check to see if it's versus pedestrians? And how many per, I would like to see the data, the actual data to compare, because...
Yep.
... pedestrians, bicyclists, cars... Pedestrians, bicyclists, cars, you're saying that there's a lot of accidents. I would like to see the report of what that is.
Okay. I'm happy to answer those. I'll take them in order. First, on the issue of easements or acquisitions, first, let me make it clear that no one's property in its entirety would need to be acquired for any of this. It potentially would require along some corridors what we call sliver taking, which is take one or two or three or four feet of the front or a wedge of a property. In some cases, that could just be done through easement, which means you don't change the property lines at all. You just get permission from the property owner to put a sidewalk or a pathway across the front, of which you, you have those arrangements all through town. Most of those would occur on state roadways because that's where most of what we've recommended for pathways and sidewalks had been planned. And so it would be the state's responsibility to do that. The state has an entire, the DOT has an entire department devoted to exactly that for their projects. And that is a time-consuming process for any given project. It can take a couple of years just to negotiate and acquire those easements and rights ways. We've, we've only identified those for the projects for which we've done conceptual design plans for. And so we have identified some right-of-way constraints along Route 1 to a lesser extent on 117 and really nothing on 215 of note. I think there may be one property where there's a little bit of a sliver that, to accommodate, would, sliver taking or an easement would be required, so very low impact on that one. We have not, we have not analyzed the rest of the corridors for which we've recommended facilities. And that may be an issue for some of the sidewalks that we've recommended because in some areas, there's very little space that either the town or the state owns beyond the edge of the roadway. With respect to the crash data, it, it did in fact come from the Connecticut Crash Data Repository. And we're very fortunate in Connecticut, we have an incredible repository of information. 15 years ago, when I was doing this work, you really had to go to the town and pull police records and, and go through it manually and hope that you had everything. And now we have it all in one place and it's tremendous data. It's a tremendous resource. So we did pull crash data for all crash types. And we also referenced both bicycle and pedestrian crash data, of which, you know, fortunately, there are very few bicycle and pedestrian crashes. Unfortunately, when those do occur, they're vulnerable users and they tend to be high injuries, sometimes fatality crashes. So we, we did have all that data and it's summarized in our existing conditions report or the existing conditions section of our plan.
So can we get a copy?
It's all in the plan.
No, I, broken down.
It'll all be documented in the plan. And in that data, as you, it sounds like you're familiar with it.
I am.
You can go onto the UConn Crash Data Repository and pull down whatever you'd like to find. And it's incredibly user-friendly and interactive.
I, go ahead. I know how to use it, but it'd be interesting for the rest of the group to learn how to do it too. So that's why I'm asking for the information.
Sure. We do provide just a summary of it. We weren't tasked with developing like a separate memorandum summarizing the safety analysis. Safety analysis is kind of integral to what we do, so we provided that mapping and we described our findings. And so it's a very high-level summary overview. But fortunately, as I mentioned, that data is also readily available directly from, from the state.
My other question, wait a second. My other question is, you wouldn't have contacted the state, I'm piggybacking off of Council Mayor's question from the state, and spoken with them to make sure that we are on the right path because they may have something different to come up with, correct?
Our coordination has been through the COG and through Kate Ratan, who's our liaison to the state. And we, we know from working with Kate that there's support for doing this type of work regionally. And we, we, we don't, we expect that DOT is going to support this work. Now, as to how soon some of these projects can happen and whether or not they'll fund any aspect of it or you'll have to be reliant upon grant funding, I, I can't answer that question. I think the next step in our process would be to approach the state with our, with our recommendations and see where we can go from there. I have been in touch with the DOT regarding, and the regional office regarding planned and upcoming projects in, in the town, of which there's just a little bit of maintenance work. There's nothing major planned. But we, it, it is important that we open up a line of communications with Connecticut DOT and you're, you're absolutely right about that. And I think with a plan in hand, we'll be in a much better place to do so. My general experience is when you go to them really early before you've done their homework, they, they're really not interested in having conversation with you until you've taken a look at the issue and taken a look at what, what is possible and have come to them with some recommendations and ideas. And then they're, they're really interested in, in seeing if you could turn that into a project.
And Francisco, I just want to add in that Kate Ratan from the COG did attend one of our focus group meetings and provided a lot of guidance from her experience within, in her coordination with the DOT. So that was really helpful to have her input.
Right, yes.
So my other concern is, as everyone has stated, is funding. What if grants are not available? So we, your priority, you're saying there's some that's priority and we're not, may not be able to do it. So it would be as-is. So this could be potentially on hold for several years.
It, it could be, it could be. And, and that's, I really think that's for your town leadership to decide whether or not, you know, the town wants to expend any funds on town roads. Because some of the recommendations that we provided are for town roads under your jurisdiction. And some, some of these recommendations are a lower cost in nature. You know, they're pavement and signage for the most part. So I think there, there are some things that could be rolled into, you know, a capital budget or a resurfacing project that's town-initiated. And, and so I, I think there, this will matriculate into things that you can do and take action in a positive direction to improving things for bicyclists and pedestrians. Hopefully you are successful in getting grant funding. I worked with the town of Berlin last year. We, we didn't do a town-wide master plan, but we did do a sidewalk planning analysis following the plan of conservation and development we did for them, which recommended improving the town sidewalk network. We assisted them in a grant application and they just got $4 million to do sidewalks, a couple of miles of sidewalks. So I, we've seen a lot of success in this area, which isn't to say that you're, you're going to get a windfall and be able to do a sizable portion of this plan. But we do know without this level of planning and demonstration of commitment to an idea that's been well-considered and vetted by the community, that your likelihood of getting outside funding is significantly less.
Through the mayor, can I ask Mr. Berry a question?
Sure.
Mr. Berry, you said this, did you bring this to Public Works to figure out if possible? Because this is going to take the signs, putting up signs. Don't they do the sidewalks? Does, is this going hand-to-hand with Public Works?
Yeah, Public Works is currently reviewing it. And Greg Hanover sits on the Complete Streets Committee and has been an active participant in this whole process.
All right. And how many signs are going to be placed out for the greenway, as I'm thinking of it before I lose my time?
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's roughly 100 signs. But these are very small signs, most of them. They're tiny little placards about the size of a letter-size sheet of paper. And then approximately 20 larger welcome signs that would be located at trailheads and at the entrances to open spaces and parks.
Thank you, I yield my time. Thank you. Councilor Borderline?
Thank you. I guess, you know, like as it was stated, this is like a, you know, it's like looking at a house, you purchase a house and you're like, oh, I'm going to need a roof, I'm going to need siding, I'm going to need windows, you know, I'm going to need a furnace. Like you start piecing it all together and you have to pick your priorities. You can't do it all overnight. But you know it needs to be done. And I think what this document does is highlights the need that we move towards that direction of a more walkable community that's safe for all folks, you know. Again, we're looking to grow our grand list and, you know, grow and have more affordable housing here. Apartment complexes going up at the top, up there by the Super 8 Motel and the Taco Bell at the top before you get the Kohl's Plaza. That's going to bring more traffic in. A lot of those people that rent places like that want to hop on their bike, drive to EV, drive to an AV base, like, you know, not have to commute and use their car. And so having these accessibilities or a way to walk to work or connect, also what it brings in people, like having that connectivity coming off of 117 brings folks from Ledgerd safely over, right? So I just see this as a, as a long-term plan. Funding is something we have to think about, but I do, a lot of the things I pulled out of here were some simple things like improving some paint in certain areas and just, you know, like small things that the community can do on our own roadways without a lot of capital money to use and overhead. So I just wanted to speak to that really quick. My question is like the smaller tangible lower hanging fruit, you know, you're not going to get there overnight, you got to start somewhere. So I just wanted to ask, like, you know, do you think that's an approachable way to look at it meanwhile, looking at the grants and other opportunities?
Who are you asking?
To, through, to the gentleman that's speaking regarding the, the process. When you, when you talk about the town side roads and the more easier ways to grab things on our own roadways. Do you recommend that we work with like Public Works and kind of map out a plan based on this theory? Meanwhile, start to apply for grants and things for the other areas?
If, if that question is for me, then absolutely, exactly if this, this is intended to be the game plan by which you can take, you can pursue more than one avenue, you know, while you're applying for grants, using this plan to support a grant application. You can also be taking a look at what you can integrate into either your maintenance programs and budgets or, or capital improvement budget. You can, you can start coordinating with Public Works better about the needs along these corridors and thinking about major projects that are planned in the future, whether it be, you know, stormwater improvement projects require this side of the road or the road to be all torn up. Start thinking about, well, what do we put back in its place? This, this plan is intended to be a strategic guide for both town and state roadways.
Well, I just thank you for the efforts on all of this and I, I'm in full support of it, again, looking at how we apply, get there. I might not see it finished in my lifetime, but maybe my children will and the future of the infrastructure here for, you know, the new housing that's coming in, you know, you want that accessibility, so. And when applying for grants, as it was stated, at least now we have something that we can say, hey, look, we have a plan. And most times that's, in order to get a grant, you have to have at least that plan written out. So we're ahead of the game. So I guess it's something that I would recommend that the council kind of keeps, you know, whoever, you know, is up here or town manager at the time, this should be like a plan that's always at the forefront when we're looking at repaving a road. Oh, wait, what was designated for that road? Can some simple paint with a line change and modify that road? It's a guidance. So I just think we just keep this book around and work to apply. And if we get rejected, we keep applying, like, but we look at ways to try to bring in some revenues to improve our infrastructure here. And I thank you guys again and I think it's a wonderful plan. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, did you have something?
Yeah, just adding on to that, a reminder that our Complete Streets policy does require, as we look at streets, to confer with the committee, they make recommendations. If it was part of our, you know, annual type of budget, then they would work with Director, Barry and Director Hanover to make recommendations to me to put in for CIP. Then I would do whatever I do with it and then eventually to the council.
Thank you. I'm going to take a turn. Thank you all. Thank your committee and thank you all for putting in the effort and the work on this. I am proud to be on the council that brought forward our first bike path on Thomas Road and, you know, in Rotten. And as I knock doors and campaign, I talk to many people that are cyclists as well as people that like to walk. And I've heard much about how they want better bike safety in our community as well as how excited they get just to even have new sections of sidewalk put in to make it more walkable. So I fully understand the gravity of what this does. I will say I have very large sticker shock on the pricing. I mean, the grand total of $41 million, it's, it is a little shocking to come forward with that kind of number. But previously, when we had discussed things like this, and as it's been mentioned, Public Works, when they have like a project going on, that they would try and keep this in mind and how to make streets better. Is that how some of this would just go forward? Because I can't see us coming forward with this. And, and Mr. Burke, your, your plan is not to bond for these type of things and to create this, but are we just going to try and implement it in our processes as we go?
I mean, I'm not winging it on bonding, of course, because that's within the purview of the council. But yes, as we look at streets, we look at these opportunities and then price out these options and, you know, hopefully some of this can be plugged, you know, plugged away as we go along.
Right. And I would also like to say, this is just like, I have a bunch of notes, I'm going to probably just throw some random things out there. I am not a fair, a fan of the shared roadway, especially on busy streets. I have seen them in other communities and it just has a picture of a bicycle in the middle of the road and you're like, where is the bicyclist supposed to ride? And where am I supposed to be? And I'm not, maybe I just don't understand how the rules of the road go with this, but it is one of those things that, especially on a busy road, I mean, I can understand in some sections, I can think of a few places where we might have to do that, but I would much rather them have a designated area on the side if it's at all possible. And I would honestly love to make our whole community bike and pedestrian friendly. But from what I'm understanding, some of the priorities that I'm seeing in this packet that are on our page 51, the priorities that the committee came forward with are Route 117, Route 1, Route 215. And the thing is, all of those are state roads. And from my experiences and what we've heard from some of our state legislators, they've said the state doesn't put in sidewalks. That's what, I mean, unless something's changed since just a couple of years ago, that's what I was told. So how hard it will it be to work with the state to make these type of changes in the sidewalks and things of that nature?
So if anyone's been down on Route 215, the state is currently working on a project and that project is going to include a dedicated bike lane. So the state, as Francisco had mentioned, when they're analyzing the project and considering the scope, they have to consider, you know, whether it's sidewalks or on-road bike paths or whatever. And I think the, the work that's being done on 215 down by BV Cove is a perfect, is a perfect example of what they have, what they are doing and their level of commitment to making state roads more accessible. Now granted, that's only a relatively small section, but, you know, as other pieces of the road need work, they have to go through that same process.
Mr. Burke?
Adding on to that, the state also allowed, through our traffic authority, we requested painting bicycle markings on Groton-Lung Point Road and they gave that approval. We did the markings, which was relatively cheap, but they were perfectly willing to work with us on that.
All right, within 13 seconds, the wayfinding signs, they're different from our orange wayfinding signs. How will they integrate together?
I'm not sure what the orange ways.
The town proper signs. The orange and blue for facilities and our road. The town proper signs, the orange and blue for facilities in our road.
The one that got knocked over at Route 17 and Route 1?
Oh, right, right, right.
Like that kind?
Yeah. Well, I'm pretty sure there was some blue in the wayfinding signage.
The orange ones?
They, they're blue and orange.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. How are they gonna integrate together, is that what I'm asking?
Well, depending on where along the wayfinding, where along the greenway it is, the signs are different in size. Generally, like Francisco said, they're like the size of a sheet of paper, a little bit larger and they can be mounted on, from my understanding, they can be mounted on existing telephone poles or depending on the spacing, you know, they can be mounted on a, on a, on a metal pole. Or at trailheads, you would have a larger kiosk that has information, if you are entering, for example, a different property that's managed by a, a different organization, there would be information about that particular property that they were entering. So it would be in combination with the larger wayfinding plan that's being developed for the community.
So you would have them on Route 1, just saying?
Yes.
So if it's on a state road, we run into issues with the town signs and having to get town, state approval for all those?
Yeah, and in some instances, we would have to get state approval, but I think the point is, we now have a plan and not just, oh yeah, we're gonna put one here, we're gonna put one there. No, we have, we know exactly where each sign is to go.
Okay. Counselor Gajewski? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My apologies for, when you said Van Inter Burke, I thought you were speaking out, so I took off a second, my accident. Thank you all for coming and thank you for your presentation. I'm in the minority in this one. I feel that this plan that's been presented this evening is missing some information. As some of my colleagues pointed out, accident reports, possible areas of easements, the needs for that, the number of signs needed for the green of way. And then the usage of, and then I would have liked to see some of the usage of some of these roads and what's a higher priority and what's a lower priority. And then, so from there, you know, and then on my own end, I mean, we see these four corridors that you've presented, but I don't know the pricing of the four corridors. And then, so I'd like to see that. And then I'd like to see a little bit further down after the four corridors, because these are state roads. So my confusion and my concern is, is that if we can't get with, if we can't partner with DOT, you know, what's the plan for working on town roads? Because right now, the main need is on state roads, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want this work to go to waste, because this is a pressing need in our community.
Would you, would you like me to respond to those as best I can?
Yes, please.
Okay, and there were a number of them, so please remind me if I forget one of them. But let me start with the signs. The, the signage package, as I mentioned earlier, for the crosstown greenway is actually a separate project, it's related to our work, which is why we discussed it. There is a separate document and package that identifies the exact number of signs, exactly what is to be on each sign, at what location. So it has a tremendous level of detail with respect to that, including cost estimates associated with that. So that, I think if you were to review that package, it would, it would hopefully answer a lot of questions that you have with respect to that. Are the corridors, we did do detailed cost estimates for each of the corridors and, and those line-by-line estimates are included within the document that I believe has been shared with you, it's in the plan for all three segments of Route 1 for Route 117 and 215.
Could you directly do a page of that, please?
I believe it's in the appendix.
Oh, in the appendix, okay.
Probably around, I think it's, I'm looking at page 214, 215.
It's at the end of, yeah, the end of the appendix.
Of our council page?
Yes.
214, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so sorry. It's, I have 115 and 114 of their packet and I have 183 of our packet and 182.
Oh, okay. Sorry, then I digress my previous comments, I didn't know it was in the, I didn't know it was in the appendix. So I was, sorry. Thank you for pointing that out to me, so you can skip that part.
But, you know, to your larger question, which is a very important question, I think consistent with concerns that other people have had and that we've talked about now, is, you know, you, you're, you're right in that, you know, the DOT, you only have so much control over state roadways. We, we've identified a lot of town roadways for recommended improvements, whether it be sidewalks or improved bicycle facilities. And those are projects, and many of those, in one of the first phase or the second phase, either sidewalk or bicycle improvements. And those are corridors that, yes, there's some costs associated with those, but those are town-owned facilities and they're within your jurisdiction. And those are projects that you could choose to advance while at the same time trying to advance some of these larger projects on state roadways.
Yeah, now that I've, now that, I see that now, that, now that I've been working through the appendix. And then, you know, also my concern, do we have a plan of how to apply for these grants? Is it still gonna be, as our same old processes? I know we added a grants coordinator, but I know that there was discussion of possibly not doing that with federal cuts, I just. Do it in there.
I think that's, Mr. Barry.
Yeah, depending on the grant, it would be either done through the Public Works Department. I can tell you that right now, the Parks and Recreation Department is working on a community connectivity grant to fund the entire wayfinding, the greenway project. And I think it's due sometime in May. So I think it's really dependent on what the particular scope of the project that they're looking to fund and, like I said, whether that's the Public Works Department or the Parks and Recreation Department or planning or whoever, community development.
Mr. Burke?
Just to add on also, we would work with the COG on some of these and utilize their transportation planners in conjunction with our staff.
The reason I'm asking these questions is some of the funding sources that were for grants and possible applications require immense detail, immense thoroughness. And I just, I'm concerned that the current town staffing levels for it is not gonna be enough slack, to get those done. So I think it's, I think it's gonna prohibit us in the long run from completing this in the long term.
Well, also, as we prioritize internally, there's sometimes we put in funding for outside expertise to help put these things together, so I'm, I'm not really daunted by that. We've been very successful at grants overall and it's kind of along the same pathways we've done before, so.
All right, all right, that's it for me, your last.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm with the mayor. I got a couple of questions that have come up. The signs, I don't think they should be in the same color and, or anything of our concurrent wayfinding signs. My thought process on that is that they're gonna be smaller signs. People are driving 25 to 40 miles an hour and they're gonna crack their neck trying to figure out what that sign says and it doesn't mean anything to them. So if it doesn't, if it's not a wayfinding sign that, that is directed toward them, it shouldn't be colored like one that is directed toward them. So it, and they're, they're smaller because bikes go smaller, some go slower. So they, people have time to, to see that sign. So, yeah, I don't think they should be in conjunction with, as far as the color scheme as the ones we currently have for automobiles. With that said, done with that, will any of these lanes be taken up parking spices, spaces?
No, so for, well, let me walk that back a little bit. We, we can only affirmatively answer that question for the, the concept corridors that we did the plans for, because we looked at that across those corridors. So there's, there's no on-street parking along any of those corridors that would be displaced by our recommended improvements. However, there are impacts to some properties that are parking, currently have parking areas that are within the state's right-of-way or spilling onto the state's right-of-way along Route 1 primarily, that would be impacted. So there are some impacts to commercial properties and their parking areas that would essentially require those parking areas to be rebuilt and potentially reduced a little bit in size to accommodate what, for the most part, would be a pathway or wider sidewalk along those corridors.
Okay. I was more concerned about my, our constituents who, who just may be parking their own personal vehicles along the side of the road and then they get a ticket because a bicycle wants to go by.
Yeah, by, by example, Route 1 through Mystic, you know, there is on-street parking through there and we did, we did not recommend bike lanes in that section, because the only place for the bike lanes would have been where you have on-street parking. We know how vital it is to that neighborhood, in fact, that's how you started your meeting. So in that area, we've recommended shared roadways.
Okay. And my, my last two quick things are, you didn't mention anything in the packet about bike racks when they get to their destination and/or the bike repair stanchions. Do you have any idea about those?
We, we do. We did present on bike racks, but we do provide a little bit of guidance on the types of racks that should be provided and how those should be laid out. We did not identify specific locations, we'll leave it up to the town for that. But we, we do provide some guidance as to what types of racks to use and how those should be arranged when located together. And we did not, and I'm sorry, but we did not repair, provide any guidance on repair stations or stanchions.
Okay. I would like to see, if, if you can, if we can, I'd like to see that in the next, next round, because I, I did see one of those stanchions over on the Stonington side and I was like, this is fantastic.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I don't wanna carry my bike over to Stonington so I can fix this flat tire. Thank you very much, I'm good, I'm done.
All right, Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question. And talking about the list of streets, you have the implementation plan tables and Route 649, South Road, are you talking about underneath the bridge? Because there is no way there could be a bike lane through there.
Yeah, that is an incredibly challenging location. We, we actually talked about that at length at our public presentation. We had some very concerned residents address their concerns there. In that location, unfortunately, a bike lane can't be continuous through there, so bicyclists have to enter the roadway, share the lane with roads or, or walk their bike through that location. And there simply just aren't viable alternatives without a $10 million or more project to rebuild that, that trestle, that rail underpass. And we know it's a constraint for traffic as it is. And we, we did not do detailed design drawings or concept plans for that specific area. If we were, I could tell you that improving the lighting would be a primary consideration, because even during broad daylight conditions, you know, with the dark shadow of that cast can be, alone can be a safety hazard.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Route 649 is a state road?
Yes, it is, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we only did, we only did concept designs for 215, 117 and Route 1. And that means we only got, we only took a look at that level of detail for those corridors. Everything else was a planning level, level of detail, meaning we're mostly taking a look at right-of-way widths, traffic volume, traffic speeds, the crash history. And we weren't taking a look at things like specific bridges, underpasses, culverts and those types of constraints.
Again, there, there's, those are still state roads, so it's a concern that
Yes.
we would be trying to go out for grants to fund the state roads, which, that's a whole other ballgame. So I'm liking some of the concept, I'm just wondering about funding and how we would do it. And I don't wanna take away from the roadways, because sometimes having a big truck and, or construction trucks coming through with their big wheels and everything and narrowing the road might be a problem. So, especially if they have to drive over into the bike lane, so just some concerns with that, but thank you.
Yeah, and thank you. And we're very careful not to recommend bicycle lanes where there is not room for them and where there would be regular encroachment of vehicles into that bike lane.
Thank you, Counselor Merritt.
Yes, I have a couple of thoughts that I've thought about for quite a while. And did anybody look at the supposed bike trail down Industrial Drive and through Knoxville Court and Paquannic Bridge? And the trolley trail over to Noank? And then you go over to South Road and you've got Karen Avenue, you enter from there and that can go across the end of the airport property, some, if they have the room there, and then rebuild the bridge over at Bluff Point. And you go right on Out Depot Road to Industrial Drive in that direction. Cuts out, cuts out a lot of area.
Mr. Barry, do you have a response?
It's my understanding that you're not gonna get a bridge in the airport.
No, there's a bridge there already, they just have to build across it. They just have to repair the bridge at Bluff Point in the picnic area.
Right, and that bridge would go across the airport property?
It would go over near to it. You'd have to talk to them about going, I believe, on their side of the fence unless there's enough room left over on our side of the fence.
Yeah, I, it's my understanding that that is never gonna happen. And I've heard that from a number of different people.
Because I, I'm kind of at odds of why we developed, I think we paid $153,000, or I could be mistaken, for that small path from Knoxville Court to Industrial Drive?
Yeah, that's part of a bigger community connectivity
Yeah.
project. Yeah, there's costs associated with connecting one part of the community to the other safely.
I know there's two or three other paths in that area already with gates on them. I mean, how many are we gonna develop before we, we're not even working them into our plans or using them?
I'm not sure which paths you're talking about that aren't getting used.
That goes from Fort Hill Homes over to Industrial Drive.
Right.
I know of one, maybe one or two more gates besides the one the town put up with the ballards.
I'm not aware that there's, so you're suggesting that there's gates that restrict people from?
Right, which they really don't do, because the property is so wide open, they just ride on by them.
I'm not aware of any gates.
Just walk up Industrial Drive and count the gates.
Well, the bike path that connects
Correct, correct.
There's no gate there. There's no gates on the bike path.
There's at least two gates up there. One is a square bar and the other's a round one, green.
On, so you're saying there are gates on the bike path?
On Industrial Drive, I don't know where they lead to in Fort Hill Homes. One leads to Knoxville Court. That's a path that we put in.
Right.
We paved it.
Right. And I'm not aware that there's a gate there.
Maybe there's, maybe I could be mistaken, but I know there are. Maybe there's, maybe I could be mistaken, but I know there are the gates. Why they're there, I don't know.
The whole point of putting the bike path in was to improve accessibility. I mean, we didn't put a bike path in and then put a gate up saying
No.
Yeah, no, that, there's bollards there to keep vehicles from driving through, but it's wide enough for bikers and hikers and joggers and baby carriages.
Well, that was one of the remarks about the path all the way down to Haley Farm, et cetera, was the baby carriages and pushing strollers and such.
Right, it's a, it's a multi-use path that the state has put a trail counter on there and I saw the numbers frequently and there's close to 100 users, I think, every single day. So it gets used quite often.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
The trail counter was recently removed.
Yeah, and relocated, but, right.
The what?
The trail counter that the
Oh, yeah, okay.
It was recently removed, but prior to that, I believe the most recent numbers, and don't hold me to this, but I think it was eighty-some-odd users per day based on the location that it was at. And it's been since relocated, I think, to some other place. But that, that is getting used.
Yeah. I still kind of like the idea of across the end of the airport, but I know where that's going to wind up at with Homeland Security. Yeah, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm not seeing any hands. There is a motion on the floor. We are waiting for another body to review this and would like to give their opinion on it before we take a vote on accepting this plan. So I would entertain a motion to postpone until April 22nd.
So moved.
All right, so postpone. 2/4/22, made by Rusk, seconded by Gajewski. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. All right, passes eight zero zero. Madam Mayor, can we take a recess? I was thinking the same exact thing. So it is eight, thank you all for coming and thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's very valuable information. It is 8:24 and we're going to take about a 10-minute recess.
All right. Are we recording? Yes. Okay, we're back from recess at eight forty-two PM. Onto our next item, two zero two five dash two four two Athletic Fields Task Force Discussion. This is on page two hundred and thirty over a packet. There's no motion, this is going to be a discussion. Mr. Burke, did you want to lead into this one?
Sure. As you recall, recently, we received the Athletic Fields Task Force presentation on their recommendations. I was tasked with coming back with some ancillary information such as what would the bond process, bonding ordinance process be for a referendum? What are, what kind of debt do we already have for bonds? What are some potential projects we may want to bond, that sort of thing? So I'll jump into it if that's all right. I'm gonna go ahead and share my speed. Okay. So I'll go through the steps of bonding, bonding referendum. Do you want me to go through every step here? I guess the long and short is, part of the question was, could we, if we started now, could we be ready in time for November for a, for a bond issuance? And just so you know, the date to get the language, the referendum language into the state is September fifth. That's kind of the key date to make the eleven-four election. In order to make that, let's say you gave me your direction right now, which way you wanted to go. If we just did our normal slow, regular process, we would be too late by about two months. We'd have to, we can make the deadline, but we need guidance soon. And then there'd be a couple of times where we would have to have like the public hearing, a COW and approval kind of simultaneous to make that timeline. Let's see, I don't know if you have any questions off that list. So generally speaking, you'll give me the advisement at what numbers you might, what things you might be interested in. I work with a financial analyst to put those costs together, tentative bond payment schedule. Of course, you never know until you actually issue the bonds and what that would be. But it's a rough guess. You adopt a, eventually you adopt a resolution authorizing preparation of a bond ordinance. The bond attorney would draft the bond ordinance. You would have a public hearing. The COW would set the public hearing council, set the public hearing, hold the public hearing. Those are some places where we could speed up the process. Town clerk has to forward the public hearing to the RTM. They have public hearing notice published in the newspaper. The planning commission simultaneously would do the eight twenty-four referral, give their comments on whether what we're looking at is in line with the town's P O C D, Plan of Conservation and Development. The council holds the public hearing. The COW would then review the ordinance, recommend for a resolution for adoption. You then adopt and refer to the RTM. At times of the essence, you would do a six-five-three, Rule six-five-three to speed it up. RTM does their own normal process, refer to subcommittee. Subcommittee recommends for adoption, RTM then reviews. And after that, it's publishing the notice of passage in the paper for that ordinance. The COW would review and recommend a resolution setting the referendum date, the form of the question, the preparation of the explanatory text. And then the council would then adopt the resolution for that. Again, another spot where you could save some time by doubling up. And then the town clerk has to notify the Secretary of State's office of the, of the approved language by, as I said, September fifth for the eleven-four election. So it's doable, but I would need, like I said, some pretty quick guidance. Moving on to the next page, starting to go through some of the financials. First up is what do we currently have outstanding? We have, right now bonded debt, we have seventy-three million, six hundred and twenty thousand. We also have a bond anticipation note for eleven million, two hundred thousand. That's the, for the last bit of the schoolwork. It takes a few years for the state to audit your, your construction costs. And then they tell you what they're gonna refund and some things they might not refund. So you keep rolling this every year until they finish that audit, then you know exactly what you have to bond for the last piece. So that's gonna roll for another year or two. So the total debt is eighty-four million, eight hundred and twenty thousand. So roughly eighty-five million in debt that we have currently for, on the general fund. And just to note, this is not, this does not include sewer bonding, that's totally separate, does not count towards our max. That's completely out of this discussion. And I should just, I'll get, I'll go into a little more detail in a second. Go to the next page. This breaks up those bonds. On page two thirty-three, it breaks up bonds by general obligation, general government, our, our town proper bonds versus the education bonds. If you look, the town itself has three bonds outstanding. They're all in refunding status, they were refinanced for a lower interest rate. For twenty-six, our costs on that, our payment for those bonds is about one, just over one point six million. It's one point four million and change for the principal, two hundred and twenty-two thousand for the interest. And then moving to the education, long-term debt payment, I should note that this piece right here does not have that bond, the bond, the, the bond anticipation note, I'll touch on that in a second. That's about eight million dollar cost in twenty-six for education bonds. And the, two of those are older for like the high school work that went on before. And those are also being, have been refinanced for a lower amount. There's not a whole lot left on those, almost all this is the new construction. The next page, two thirty-four, that actually breaks up again the general government versus Board of Ed, showing from two thousand twenty-six onward what the current planned cost is each year for the existing bonds. So if you look there, function, the general government, the first block, you can see again the principal and interest that you saw on the last page. Moving on to the Board of Ed, again, principal and interest, still two thousand twenty-six. And then added in is that, the new ban that we'll be selling in the next month or so, tentatively four hundred and forty-six thousand. So we'll be paying in twenty-six, again, without the sewer, approximately ten million dollars on our bond payments. And just so you have an idea, so that's about ten million we're paying right now with about eight four billion in debt. Our, as you know, as we discussed previously, our, our, our debt policy states that we can, our debt service shall not exceed ten percent of the total general fund expenditures. This year's amended general fund budget is one hundred and fifty-seven million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five forty-six. So what that means is our debt limit for payment is fifteen million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, six fifty-five. So fifteen point seven million that we under the policy could be paying. We're paying ten million currently for that eighty-four million in debt. And then, you know, you could use some prorating on what approximately things would cost. But until you actually go out to bond and have it looked at, you know, sometimes they're front loaded for extra costs earlier on, sometimes it's later, you don't know the interest rate, so that's a very rough, you know, you can only roughly extrapolate. But, so again, there's about five point seven million available for bond payments. Now, in terms of everything I could come up with for potential large projects that you could think about bonding, first of all, first off, Athletic Field Task Force, breaking it up as we've seen on the earlier sheet. And you could see the high school totals thirty-seven point two million, but it is broken down by component there at the top of the green, followed by Claude Chester, which is about just under thirteen million for all of it. Sutton Park, six point four million. Board of Education, as you know, we've been looking at the HVAC systems and hopefully we'll be able to get some funding eventually through the state. Now, I want to reference that, I believe it is Charles Barnum and Fitch, those are placeholders. It's, it's an earlier number that needs to be updated by the Board of Ed. I'm waiting on those numbers so that, those two will change. Again, that is Charles Barnum and Fitch, but those are the holding numbers I've been given previously. And then altogether, at those current prices, that's about fifteen point five million for HVAC work. City of Groton, the seawall, we're waiting on a price for overage. Of course, there'll have to be discussions on what exactly, you know, is our responsibilities with that. But it's a possibility out there, right now penciling in two point five million. We discussed previously Parks and Rec, eventually the sprinkler system at the golf course will need to be replaced at approximately three million. The tricentennial playground, the only accessible playground we have, which is at Quonah Plains Park, fully accessible, is about approximately nine hundred thousand. And then the, we have the Amtrak, GLP Road, Amtrak Bridge, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's been locked in for what our portion will be. Main Street No Ink is approximately, at this point, it could change over time as it gets refined, with two point eight million dollars. And then the former Fitch Middle, there's some different, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go into that in just a second here, some potential rehab work there that will be discussed more in detail at a later council meeting. And moving further, moving into the middle school, you could see highlighted again the cost for, we had a plan done in twenty-three, was the last time it was updated, two thousand twenty-three, for what could happen. And it was shown to be, now, there are some alternatives to this, it could be done in different phasing, but the base plan was, and some alternate costs. But the base plan was Phase One, which is, and I'll jump down to the map in a second, but Phase One's the A Wing, the front area of the building, lower, Parks and Rec auditorium, both the areas of the front, Parks and Rec, auditorium, restrooms, locker rooms, probate court, who are in dire need of more space. Those are all about, as in two thousand twenty-three dollars, about eleven point four million. Phase one A is if we do the envelope of the building, windows, tuck pointing, that type of thing, about twenty million, twenty point seven. Phase two would be another portion of the A Wing, the lower priority portion, IT, kitchen, dance studio, some things for Parks and Rec. Phase three is renovation of all, and that's about nine point seven million. Phase three is renovations to all remaining areas, three point two million. And there was that back area, that's the furthest back of Town Hall, all the way, or the community center, all the way back, which is the worst shape of the building. There was some talk in price, tentative pricing of an aquatic center at thirty-four million. Now, there are different, again, different options for how to do these, some could be done renovate versus some portions of it new. So we do have, once we get further into this later, there's some ranges from thirty-eight million to forty-seven million, depending on, without the aquatic center, on what you could do. But what I listed already for the main phasing without the aquatic center is about forty-five billion. And here you can just kind of see, the blue area to the left on this map, that's that first phase. That's the initial Parks and Rec probate, some of those things. One A again is the outside of the building envelope. Phase two is moving into IT. Now, one of the things we want to do with IT eventually is, where they're at in our building is below ground level. So if something happened with, you know, flooding, that would be a big issue. And then moving on from there. So again, later, later council meeting, we'll go further into detail on this, just kind of give you a rough idea of what's out there. I was asked to put some prices of every possible project. Moving into the school one, now, one thing I do need tonight is, we are going to be applying for a community infrastructure fund grant. It'll have several components, and that's coming up, if we can make this round in April. We're working with the schools, they're looking at some projects, but we're looking at, no, at Main Street No Ink as one component and looking at a portion of one of these for the, for the fields. I, I lean towards, personally, I lean towards the high school. But I know there's alternate views on doing Claude Chester to expand the, the use of, have more fields use. And Mark, if you want to go through it, you're welcome to weigh in on this too, since you're so intimately involved. You don't have to. But, you know, but I do need some direction, pretty fast here, really fast here, to decide, to put in for a grant. But again, working into these, if we go into the high school, there's about thirty-seven million worth of work, but you can see on the map here how it breaks out with the fieldhouse, softball field, restrooms, site amenities, track field stadium, multi-use field. Moving to Claude Chester, you have the multi-use field at six point three million, fieldhouse at about nine hundred thousand, school demolition, two million, site amenities, about three point seven million. And then Sutton Park, you have baseball field, the larger one, two point eight million, site amenities, one point five million, restroom concessions, four hundred thousand, softball field, one point seven million. And just as I'm, again, talking about our bond debt limit, I think under the policy, I think it'd be hard, let's say you were interested in doing this whole plan, I think it'd be hard pressed to get that under the policy. It'd be close, I think, right, you know, you know, in the six to seven million range likely on bond payment, that's very rough. You know, just take that with a large grain of salt. But then there would be no bond room left for HVAC work or anything else. And I don't generally think we should fill up all our bond debt capacity anyhow. But I just wanted you to understand that. And in terms of the CIF grant, Mark, do you have anything on the way? And that'll be a joint application with the Board of Ed, Parks and Rec, myself and Public Works. And again, we need to know, is your preference Claude Chester focus or high school focus? Mark, do you want to make a pitch? Feel free.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that the high school, there's a number of issues at the high school. And so I, I think that's the town's first priority. Although I, I think there's a great opportunity to, I would like, well, it's not what I would like. So the Athletic Fields Task Force has identified the needs, and it's in all three areas. As far as priority, I think the high school comes first and Claude Chester would be second, and then Sutton Park would be third.
I have just a quick question. You laid out how much we can afford a year in a payment, but what does that convert to?
I don't want to say afford, how much capacity is there?
Capacity, I'm sorry. What the capacity is in a year, what is, what does that convert to in?
If you were to use about that six million range, right around there, that's about one point two mils at the current four point seven million per mil. So it's about one point two mils. So let's say a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that'd be about three hundred thousand or so, or three, thirty, three hundred, sorry, three hundred dollars extra a year on about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, roughly.
Or is that bonding?
Debt service, yeah. The whole project, of course, yeah, if you did the, I'm talking if you did fifty, is it fifty-four million total?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, if you did fifty, if you wanted to bond fifty-four million, that would take up at least all, right around all capacity, maybe a little more. And it would be around the roughly one point two mils per year, six, seven million per year.
Thank you. I just, I didn't see that in here, thank you. Okay. Council Board of Ed. Council Board of Ed.
I mean, I really, I just want to thank Mr. Berry, as, you know, I served on the task force along with, Athletic Task Force, along with Mayor Franco, he started back on that, it seems like ages ago.
Four years.
Four years ago.
Four years.
And, you know, as a person who graduated from Fitch and, you know, have two children that just graduated from Fitch, you know, I want it all done, I'm sad that this has never been a priority, and it has nothing to do with this council or previous councils, it goes back, previous, 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 it just always got kicked down the road and never made it anywhere. So, here we are, and we have many fires burning. I absolutely feel that the high school is absolutely a priority, from the ABA standpoint to the safety concerns, I mean, you know, as a person who spent many, many days, many years of my life at that field between, with my kids' events, and then my own events, and then community events, it is sad when you see parents that have to sit down on the lower field because it can't get in the stands, or people who are not well enough to get up into the stands because of fear of falling, or the holes where kids have literally almost fallen through, bathrooms that are incompatible, impassable for, you know, people with disabilities, barely can use them, not adequate, can barely turn around, old locks, not proper sinks, the list goes on. We have an obligation, if we're going to provide a full funding of our education, we have an obligation to make sure that structure is up to code, and it is embarrassing to me to travel to outside our community and see that we, back when I went to school, we were kind of starting to trend down, but we used to be like one of the best facilities. And we have a lot of other great things going here, but our school facilities outside aren't matching our neighbors. So, we need to, in my opinion, put our money into that, and invest in our students, our children, and the infrastructure, and then funnel outwards to the other fields, and it doesn't mean I don't want those other fields, my money, what I'd like to see on the referendum would be Fitch High School, hands down, hundred percent. Let the community speak, let's see if the taxpayers want it, and then we, as a council, kind of have a little bit of a weight lifted to determine, based off of that, you know, what comes out of that census. But even if that doesn't come out in, in favor, we still have an obligation that those are going to have to be repaired at some point, so I think that is the diving point for me. I appreciate you, Town Manager, for the updates on, you know, the bonding thing, but I think once we have a plan and we get that in writing, then hopefully things, you know, we can move forward looking at grants. Other towns have like, put memos out to different surrounding municipalities, not municipalities, big companies, some people even donated and helped other towns, you know, so I'm not saying it's going to take a huge number down, but we, we have to get moving. And to me, putting this on a referendum tells the voters, in my opinion, for me, that yes, I take this seriously, and let's see what you guys feel about it, and I think that costs us not really a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Just to point out, and we could, of course, have a simultaneous track where we apply for CIF dollars for the high school, see what we get, and then you could also have an option, okay, here's how much of it we could fund, or we could offset a bond request, so.
That's a good idea, thank you. Councilman McBride.
Thank you. John, just a question, what's the timing of this, if we were to move forward, when would this financing hit our budget? Would it be like twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
So, the referendum would be in November, you, it'd probably hit the twenty-seven budget, we would, if everything went well, you would, of course, you're going to do it in pieces, you know, you know, you might not do it in one bond issuance, depending on how you do it, depending on how quickly the construction schedule is, but let's say you issued, let's say it passed in November, and you were going to move forward, the earliest you would do it then is the spring issuance for the bonds, just like we're doing the ban now, the, like, the April timeframe, and we already start anticipating what we're going to build into, we're selling that in April, and we're, we've already built it into the twenty-six budget, what we think it's going to be, it's similar, if you were going to issue bonds in the spring of twenty-six, you would build it into the twenty-seven budget, a couple months later.
Okay, thank you. And I look at this as two, two things, one, the funding levels, and then the prioritization of what projects, and back to what Rachel was mentioning earlier.
Mayor Franco.
Mayor Franco. Mayor Franco, sorry. I look at it as, you know, we spoke, what you referred to earlier, it looks like, and I know we just issued bonds in one of the last weeks, so they were going at three forty-eight, so, let's say you assume four percent bonds for twenty years, one million dollars would get you about thirteen million dollars in financing, so I think that's where I'm coming from.
Can you repeat that? You, you talked very fast for me.
Yes, if you average, if you assume four percent interest rates, which right now they're at three, a little over three, under three and a half, we could finance thirteen million for approximately one million dollars annually. So, just, so that's, that's where I'm coming from, you know, one of these projects looks around thirteen million, the track field and stadium. So, I'm looking at maybe doing this in pieces, but what I'm trying to get to is, even with that being said, this debt service payment schedule that Tom Andrew Burt put forth, we save seven hundred thousand dollars in next year's principal, so it wouldn't even be a one million dollar pickup if you financed thirteen, because seven hundred thousand dollars decreasing, does that make sense?
Yep.
So, you could then possibly finance one point seven million for only, you know, you could finance thirteen million for a national one million dollar. So, I guess what I'm trying to do is, I think it's important to, and then after that, if you look at the three-year averages, our debt service goes down to one point one million, if you look at the five years beyond that, it, it starts to decrease lower, but still your five-year average of decreasing debt service is eight hundred sixty thousand dollars a year, so every year, your, your ability to borrow can increase by eight hundred sixty thousand dollars without impacting the taxpayers, so I think that's important to consider. And do we know what additional income is coming in for the new development?
For Triton Square?
Yeah, Triton, and when that will?
We're estimating, well, we, we're counting on one million, but it'll probably be a little bit higher than that, but we're, you know, being conservative at a million per year.
And that's twenty-six?
It should be, yeah, they're getting ready to start leasing portions, it'll probably be a couple of year phasing, most likely.
All right, so I know I'm not a fan of going into debt, but I'm, I think there is some availability of us to pursue some of these options, because I think we're, I think we're in really strong financial shape, as I mentioned previously, and I also think the general fund, the balance is extremely healthy, so without going into a lot of detail, I think there's some ability to do some financing for some projects next, next year, so I'd be in favor of that, but then I think it gets to how much, and, you know, even if you just tackled one, the priorities, it looked like there were three, there were three different, you know, if you did, if you looked at the high school, which was like the top, the top recommendation, I think from what you said, track field would be thirteen, you could co-mingle two of the others for sixteen, and then the last ones would be, would be seven, so you could do initiments over every year, every other year, without materially increasing our debt service, but still completing some of these projects. So, that's kind of where I stand, I mean, that's just the high level based upon the information I have, but it seems like there's some ability to move forward with some of these projects, and I would support, I would support them. Thank you.
Mr. Burt.
I just want to say, I would definitely want to have a good feel for what's happening with the federal funding, as well as state, our alliance district funding, but the, the lead time is so long here, I'm hoping we would know that by that point, so there's, you know, so we can obviously go down that path and see where everything leads.
So, could you repeat that? Can you repeat that?
Sure. Before we would actually issue or go out to referendum, I would definitely, myself, want to know, are there going to be any education cuts from the federal government, you know, where are we at for alliance district funding? But I would hope by then we would have a decent feel of what's happening, happening with the federal funds, so this is such a long lead time to get to the point of issuance, that there should be time for that to evolve while we're going down the road, if you were Now, if we get to September and the bottom falls out in federal funding, then I would say, please don't go out for referendum.
Councilor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just doing some rough math, because that's what I do. The multi-use field, this is for Mr. Berry, the multi-use field at the Claude Chester, is that double the size of the multi-use field at the high school? Is that actually two fields, or is it just a smaller?
Yeah, the, no, the fields are the same size, but at Claude Chester, it's two proposed fields.
But, so there's two of them at Claude Chester, and only one at the high school?
Yeah, there's one multipurpose field, right, one additional multipurpose field.
Okay. My question, the one at the high school is six point three million, and the two, Claude Chester, are six point three million. Why, if we were to remove the one from the high school, and possibly remove the site amenities from the high school, we could do Claude Chester minus the site amenities and get both projects done without site amenities in one of three ball fields. Can you do it without site amenities?
Well, I don't.
You'd have to, you know, my guess is you're going to have to do some of it, so.
Well, you're going to have to do a little bit, I'm sure there's going to be, have to be some site amenities done, because that's all, first of all, some landscaping getting to and from the fields, but.
But I do think the track field and stadium and the fieldhouse are by for, by far the biggest priorities.
Absolutely, and that, that wouldn't be a site amenity, I mean, the only thing I was thinking of.
Before doing multipurpose fields, I would say, do those first, yeah.
Yeah, because, because honestly, you get one multipurpose field at one site, and you get two at the other, why not do the two and skip the one?
Well, I.
And you get both sites done, almost.
Yeah, I, I think.
And it'll, it'll still be a cost savings of four million.
So, Mark, so you see on there, there's two shown at six point three?
Yes.
Whereas it's six point three for just one, are they really, is that really double the size of that? Is there really two full versions of that next to each other?
Yeah, the multipurpose fields are full size at Claude Chester.
Any idea why they're two for the price of one, kind of thing?
And I'm speculating now, but I, it probably has to do with the fact that there's a slope off of the back of the school, and the required work in order to make that flat, I think is probably what is driving up the cost.
And the track? There's the track too, right?
No, the track is in the, is in the twelve point six portion, the track field and stadium.
Sorry.
That wouldn't, that would definitely, in my, my thought process, that would stay, fieldhouse would stay, softball field would stay, restrooms would stay, and up the high school, you just lose the multi-field, multi-use field and the site amenities, although we understand some site amenities have to be done for egress to the field. And then the Claude Chester, you know, we, we take down the building, we do the two multi-use fields, the fieldhouse, and the site amenities wouldn't get done, with the exception of whatever needs to be done for egress.
How much are you looking to spend?
That number comes to thirty-three million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. So, it's a little bit of a savings.
So, just to point out, looking at the shading, I don't know if your copy is, is shaded, but the site amenities goes all the way over to the parking, and I think that's what they're, I think site amenities includes the parking, which is over by.
Which one?
The softball field, at the high school.
At the high school?
Yes.
Yes, it, it definitely shows that.
Right, so, you know, these changes are going to require a change in parking and, you know, egress and all of that, so I, I'm not, I, I don't have the list that Kent Frost produced, the detailed list, but site amen, you can't completely throw out site amenities, they're not as simple as.
No, definitely not.
As paths down to, you know, making the, the bleachers accessible is part of the, is part of site amenity, so I'm not sure that we can completely throw out site amenities, because then.
At the high school?
At the high school, because then you have an address parking.
So, so if we added site amenities back in to the high school, that'll probably bring the total, that's, what's that, six, six million, thirty-three million, we're looking at, maybe forty million, thirty million more than the high school alone, roughly. And we could get two multi-use fields and a fieldhouse, and that get that building torn down for one, forty thousand, four hundred million, whatever, forty million.
Yeah. I think taking, taking away the field at the high school kind of defeats what one of the goals was, was to try to keep the sports field, to keep the athletes on campus, and I think by taking away that additional field is now going to require them to travel to other places in order to have practices and whatnot.
I understand that.
So, I think that's, yeah, so, yes, you can do that, but there, you know, there's some consequences that kind of go against, I think the overall goal was to, again, was to try to keep all the, the school athletics on campus versus having to travel to other places.
Are they traveling to other places now?
They are.
So, there'd be no change? They just travel to another place in town?
Councilor Pacina, your time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Rust?
Well, I'm going to pass for right now, give me a moment, please, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm going to take a moment. We're talking about the fields here, which I think are very important, but as we've also have a list here, we have the HVAC, so Mr. Burt, there are two of them that are being noted as air quality issues. Have they done an air quality test on those?
Not today, no.
But they're saying they're.
They were, right, they were looking at it because of the moisture issues, but they haven't done an actual air quality test.
All right, so, and that is?
As of a week or so ago.
Which two schools?
Now, they filled out forms online where they marked all their maintenance, and they did that air quality report, it's on air quality tests, though.
Which two schools?
Well, they, they've done it for all this, they, they are required by the state to fill out these forms on all their maintenance and issues, and they've done that for them, it's on their website, but as of at least a week ago, they have not done actual hiring someone to do an air quality test to see what's in the air, you know, is there mold in the air, is there, right?
Which two schools are the ones?
Oh, hold on a second. I mean, they haven't done it on any of the schools, but, let's see, I'd have to look further if it, which schools, I mean, Catholic Polnaski and the Northeast Academy are replacing their handling units, but.
Charles Barnum, did they have something, or maybe not?
That's where they want to install a comprehensive HVAC system, I mean, they're all having, they all have mole, or moisture issues, they're all very similar, but there's been no testing done, no. They've had an engineer look at two of those places to recommend how to help the, and that's the Catholic Polnaski and Northeast, what do you do to help with the moisture issues, but not actual air quality testing. And I've been asking, I think it's needed to do those testing in order to prove to the state and generally to the public, if we ever were to go to bond, why we need those, why we need upgrades, I don't think, I think it needs more than just moisture.
City of Groton, seawall, can you elaborate?
So, if you recall, we had already, I think it was one point four million through ARPA dollars that we had put towards that under part of requirements for maintaining roads, roadways in the city, and of course, the retaining, or the seawall there holds up the road there, that's why it was determined at least partially be, fall under that. I've not yet received a, first of all, I know that the cost isn't fully set yet for what happened, but.
Of the athletic fields, and just say, here's ten million, and maybe we could do something, even if we just did the fieldhouse year one with, like, Main Street, and like you said, the previous, the next year, we can work on something else and go forward from there, and try and keep it so that we are not raising anything higher than where we're at. But I also will note that if you looked at two thousand twenty-nine, on the page two thirty-four, in two thousand twenty-nine, we dropped, I think it's, what's that, no, I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand twenty-nine, we dropped by like three point five million, so that's a substantial drop. Does anybody else want a first time to speak? Because, Councilor Rust?
So, I've been looking at all these numbers so many times, and again, like I've said before, I would love to, to fund it all, including an aquatic center, because in reality, that's the one thing I want the most, but I realize that that is not going to probably happen for quite some time here. My main goal would be to fund track and, the. My main goal would be to fund track and, the track and field and the stadium, I think that is probably the most important thing. And I realize that's twelve million, twelve point six million, and I realize it's edging close to that thirteen million. But again, that, that really kinda cuts things up a lot. And I really, like, I would love to do it all, and I realize we're gonna still have kids who are gonna have to go off campus, but we can't do it all at one time, I guess. I guess my question is, does it make sense to pull things like restrooms out of here and fund those separately and not even consider putting them in bonding? I feel like we could spend two, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for a new restroom there without having to bond that money. Mr. Burt?
Certainly under our current finances, as long as that they change, yes. Now, keep in mind, you might have some site work to add on to that, you know, potentially also, but yes.
Well, and I.
That's, that's more of a CIP level, if you're only looking at that.
Correct, so that's where I'm kind of looking at it. The other thing that I think is important is if we decide we are going to take down Claude Chester Elementary, then starting with that two million dollars as well, opens up a lot of space that even if it's not designated fields that are pretty and nice yet, it does give us extra space to, to potentially put down some sort of a field there, if we can get the school out of the way and it steps us in the right direction. So that's kinda my big push, would be to start with the track field and stadium, start by taking down Claude Chester, and then look at how we can start funding things like restrooms, both at the high school and potentially at Sutton Park, without having to take those out to bonding.
No, you'll thank that.
Thank you.
Council Merritt?
Yes, something I've been picking away at for quite a while, and Charles Bonham, the installation of AC, is that on the roof or is that gonna be off the roof? Where is the mechanical gonna be?
I believe they're on the, I believe it's planned for the roof.
Well, they've got a million dollars been sitting there for five years already for the roof.
They did recently approve moving forward with that, I believe the plan is this summer, I believe.
But what do they? That's been leaking, and what are they gonna find when they pull the roof off? I'm a little bit dismayed at the orientation of the way they're spending the money, that they let it go for five years when they asked for it because they needed it. And now all of a sudden, five years later, they're just coming up with a plan. I for one will not give them one more penny towards that roof.
Thank you. Anybody else want their first round? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold here for a second, because we have, to make some sort of, oh, I'm sorry, Council Parker. I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is through you to Mr. Burt. Your suggestion is to do CIF, is that, was it community?
Community infrastructure fund grant, yes, we're gonna look at.
For some of the projects, as well as try to do a referendum for anything else that the CIF doesn't cover.
Well, that would be up to the council, I mean, yeah, my initial, my concern is just putting in for the CIF, but then whatever the council wants to do besides.
How much should we put? My thing is, how big of a project can the CIF be?
And have we done it before?
We applied once, we did not get it, but partly because you have to have sort of, typically sort of an economic approach to things to, for the CIF grant. And we were applying, if you recall, funding for Brown Field at Groton Heights, I believe demolition at, at Pleasant Valley, but then as both of those fell through, there went the, that pretty much canceled out the CIF potential. But we think we have a good chance of getting it, I'm not sure, Mark, you have to remember, John had said, what, a couple of larger, I think in ten million range maybe, in some places, and multiple pieces to them.
First, the CIF.
CIF, yeah, do you remember that?
I don't.
Yeah, I wouldn't count on more, you know, it probably had multiple, you know, components to it, you know, I'd be thrilled to get, let's say, five million, you know, something like that, it's not gonna pay for a huge chunk, now there are, you know of another grant that would.
Yes, there is a, there is an ORLP grant that we are looking to partially fund the renovations to the playground at Paquana Plains Park, and I think that goes up to about five million, and we have actually, it's a federal grant, and I know the future's uncertain, but we have talked to the, a gentleman that works for Connecticut Deep who is the state kinda liaison to this federal program, and he said that the program that, or the project that we proposed, because we talked to him about both Paquana Plains Park and potentially going back again for athletic fields, explained to him the location, and he thought that, and maybe he says this to everybody, but he thought it was an excellent, it would be a very strong application, given what they're looking for and our particular projects.
I have a question, so that would be two different grant cycles, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that part probably wouldn't be in time for a November referendum?
Yeah, I, I think the, it's twice a year, and I, I think the, there's one coming up in, actually, the, the next one may be in September, I, I don't remember, but it's, it's twice a year that you can apply for, for funding. And it is, it is a fifty percent match, so if we were to get five million, we would have to come up with fifty percent of that.
Go ahead. It's, can you explain again what Council McBride was talking about, about the thirteen million, so it'll be one mil, that's if we did thirteen million, correct?
What, thirteen million in terms of a mil? Well, what did you say, what did you?
Thirteen million for one million debt service, not for a bill.
Oh, so, right. So it'll only be, you know.
Yeah, quote, quote, said fourteen million, one million dollars.
Right, and four point seven million is a mil, so you're talking point two something, you know, in that range of a mil.
So, if we bonded the whole project, is that going close, cuz that's one sixty, if we did them all, that's one hundred and sixty-one million dollars. Our current budget's one fifty-seven, so we would have to piecemeal this in order to get it. And are we allowed only to do one project at a time so that we're not over a certain dollar amount? Cuz I don't wanna go past our credit line, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable of being close to the edge of having the credit line setting us back. We gotta remember, the school system is not gonna be on the lines district forever, so that money may be disappearing. ECS funding may be changing, so we have to remember that some of the money we have, we may need to use it for the school system or anything else that comes up as an emergency. I don't wanna spend all fifteen million dollars of it, I don't know if I wanna spend ten million of it, so I'm probably gonna hold off on voting, so, thank you.
Can I make a point of clarification, or point of information?
Your question?
I think there's some confusion here. The, we have fifteen point seven million dollars. So we've, we have fifteen point seven million dollars of debt limit, period. We currently are at ten million dollars. We have five point seven million dollars available per year, correct?
For payments?
Per year for payments, not five point seven million dollars, period.
Correct.
So if we did thirteen million, we're only looking at one of those five point seven million dollars. I just wanna.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification.
Your question?
My question, that's not including the reduction.
Correct.
Of the seven hundred and twenty-seven. Does this reduce this each year?
Council Parker?
Okay. So, my question is, are we keeping the mil rate the same? Or are we gonna go up with the mil rate to cover what we're gonna do? Because if we're not decreasing, if we're decreasing our payments, or it's going less with interest in the principal, does that mean we're gonna keep the same mil rate, or does it go up more to cover what we're bonding out?
Well, it depends on what else happens, you know, you look at the budget as a whole, so you can't really say that. It's gonna be more than what the drop is. Some, not terribly more.
Can I just jump in and answer something for you? Like Council McBride said, in two thousand twenty-seven, the amount we pay out per year will drop by like point eight, like, you know, eight hundred thousand approximately.
That's with both of them?
If, what was that?
That's for both of them.
Yeah, the total due at the, by the year on the last column will drop by like point eight, so it'll be a little bit less than a million. And what Council McBride was saying, if we did thirteen million, we could, it would cost us one million, so two hundred thousand dollar difference for the whole year.
Again, with uncertainty of everything going on, we have to be very mindful of what's going on to figure out if people's livelihood are gonna be affected by us adding more. You're saying that, but we still have a new budget coming up, and I'm worried about adding additional payments to people who may not be getting the funding that they were receiving before.
Council Guyewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share the same concerns my colleague, Council Parker, has about, has about the bonds payment back. So, and the total due per year, I, again, that, you know, it is gonna be decreasing over time, you know, next year, we're seeing an eight hundred thousand dollar decrease, the year after, one point, one million, then one point, so it is gonna be gradual over time, and we're gonna have some recoup savings back in our budget, and I think there's gotta be, we have to kinda figure out what balances. Everything seems incredibly expensive to me. And my preference would be to just pick one thing, and just say one thing only, so if that's, I'm just reading, if that's doing the softball field, we just do the softball field, just, you're gonna, I think we should just slowly make chunks out of this, and then pursue other sources of funding. The last SIFT round, round six of SIFT came out yesterday, the largest project in there was, I believe, ten million dollars. So that was, so that's, I wanna put that out there, so, and then they could also do partial funding for SIFT. And then, as the manager met, mentioned, there's gotta be some kind of economic component, economic component. One of the recipients was the Guard Arts Center, which has an economic appointment, economic component because it, it helps, it marches to the downtown New London area. So, I, I wanna stress that, and then, you know, for the C-Wall completion and the Main Street knowing, there's already a pending bond request to the state that our state delegation proposed for both those, so, you know, I don't know the status of those off the top of my head, but those are currently in there, so that's something to also think about. And then, also for the Fitch High School, possibly, I don't know if it could technically fall under school construction, which would be a different avenue and a different approach we could go. But, so just with my remaining time, I do just kinda wanna respence, like, let's, I think we should just pick one thing and go from there. And then HVAC, I, personally, I'm not comfortable going forward with it until the air, until we get affirmative of the air testing studies done, so that's where I'm gonna go with that, and that's it for my first term.
I would just say, if you, personally speaking, if you pick one, I really think you'd be hard pressed, like, softball field would not rank up there to me.
Oh, I just.
Yeah, 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 try, you know, the.
It was the first one.
Yeah, the accommodations of the bleachers and the track field, the Title IX issues with the field house and the women's space, I think that's critical.
Yeah, and with my remaining ten seconds, I just read softball field cuz it was.
Sure.
Top of our list, so, it's not, it wouldn't be my first priority either, so.
All right, so, I'm just gonna, because we could, we could talk another round, and we're gonna, but my thought is, like, let's try and see if we can come to some kind of consensus, if there is a consensus to move forward and what that might look like.
And could I just say, and we could probably have the financial person run a couple scenarios, you know, I could do ten scenarios, but we could probably, you know, get two or three scenarios.
Okay, so, I just wanna start with, there seems like a lot of interest in athletic fields, so I'm gonna start with, is there any interest in potentially going forward with anything on the list? This, I'm looking on page two thirty-five and two thirty-six. Is anybody interested in anything besides the athletic fields that they would, would be concerned about bonding? That they think should come forward?
Point of information?
Your question?
I thought, I just wanna understand, I thought the Main Street knowing was already something we agreed that we were moving for, I'm just trying to understand.
But we had to fund it.
I know, we already, so that's like already, it's gonna be funded that, like, eventually, like, we already agreed, I thought, so that's kinda, I'm just confused, like, I thought.
Yeah, but we have to pay for it, like, he says.
We, we hope to fund it through one of these other grants, but that is small enough, worst comes worst, we could break it into like two-year CIF, or CIP cycle if we had to.
Okay.
And just like the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand for the bridge, you know, we could obviously pull that out of fund balance or build it in somewhere.
Right. That's why I'm asking, is there anything besides the athletic fields on this list that anybody has an interest in that they wanted to bring forward?
To bond.
Excuse me?
To bond.
To bond.
I thought Main Street is already being, that's what I'm confused about.
I'm asking if there's anything on that list that you would want to bring forward to bond, besides the athletic fields. If you were interested in saying, you know what, I think it's a priority that, one of the HVAC systems at the school is a priority for you, you would say that that would be something you wanna bring forward, potentially of something like that.
Mayor, I think there's a little confusion, sorry, there's a little confusion on, there's a request to the state for bond commission dollars, it's not set, it could, it may or may not get funded.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's already forward?
Well, trying.
Forward, that's what I'm confused.
All right, so I'm gonna, is there anything besides athletic fields that anybody has an interest on this list that they think would be very important, that is a major priority for them? Council Guyewski?
The playground at Paquana Parks, but I think that could possibly be done, be done in CIP.
Hopefully get a grant for it, otherwise CIP.
I agree, that's a CIP. Unless you wanna make it a priority and put it.
For bonding?
For bonding.
No. I think it'll be CIP.
Okay. All right, so then we're down to what looks like athletic fields. I had heard some people say that they are sort of, I guess, maybe in favor similar to what Council McBride had brought forward. So, he has, where it would be a project for like approximately thirteen million dollars, one million annually. I wanna talk, see if there's any kind of like interest, and if we have enough people to do that, or otherwise maybe go larger. But I do wanna ask Mr. Burt a question. If we said maybe thirteen million dollars, and I'm just gonna say this, just out there, and we say we wanna do the field house, or we wanna do the track and field and stadium for thirteen million, can we still go for the CIF over at Claude Chester and keep going after that, because that could be in a future year?
Certainly.
This could be another round.
Like if, just say another round comes out in, in the future year, and we were awarded and we had to do a match, we could do that in the future. That's not something that would have to happen.
Point of information?
Your question?
You're saying, do the, at the high school fields have a bond for thirteen million? Is that gonna be a three or four-year project?
Mr. Burt, tell it again.
If we're using thirteen million, are we using the thirteen million of the fifteen that we have? So we're not gonna.
Well, thirteen million would only, it's only a million of the.
We have like fifty-four million that we could probably bond.
Project cost versus payment cost?
Fifty-four million, but the project cost total fifty-six million and change. So where's the two other two million coming from?
So, so you have your, when you bond, you're paying a portion each year, we could pay up to six million-ish dollars more per year, but. but Counselor McBride is saying we would bond for 13 million, what your actual payment would be, would be approximately 1 million. And plus you have the added bonus of a drop in our bond payment anyways of 700,000 this next year. So let's say everything else stayed the same, you only talked another 300, 300,000 in payment.
Okay, my question is, what are we bonding of the 13, if we bond 13 million? What projects are we doing? Is this a complete package of the whole entire athletic fields, or is this a portion of them?
That's up to the council. But that's why I'm starting with a step one. Are we interested in potentially just doing 13 million? Or would some people like to do the whole project? I mean, it's up to what the council.
Point of information.
Your question.
I guess my question is, I almost feel like we might need other questions answered. I'm trying to make sure I'm saying this as a question, so give me a minute. You can't, it might be, it might not be that we can just pick, let's do this field. Like, we have to talk to the people who designed this, is my question, to see if, what other rhythm that they would recommend, because when you're doing construction.
Understood, but we're trying to get a direction.
Yeah, like.
Are you looking to go 13? Are you looking to do the whole package, kamboodle, the whole thing at once?
I know, we need our second time to talk, so I, I, I just think that there's more discussion needed, I, for me. I can't, I would like to have my second term.
I'm trying to get a consensus right now and a direction.
I can't give one without my second term to answer my questions. So I'd like my second option to speak.
So. So my question is, is there interest in doing a portion, a smaller portion, or doing a large portion? Spending 13 million maybe and doing a bond that may cost 1 million per year? Or are people looking to do more? That is basically sort of in the dollar amounts that I'm looking at right now, to see if, how people feel. So are you interested in 13, like around 13 million, or are you looking to go higher, Counselor Merritt?
I was looking at the track and field and stadium. Then if possible, the field house and the restrooms.
Okay, so.
In that order.
So are you looking at the 13 for the first year, or are you looking to do more?
Okay, if you, if you got 13 to play with, I'd go for the track and the field and the restrooms.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to remind you, there could be, could be another million for site improvements with that one, so, yeah, just keep it in mind, yeah.
I'm just saying roundabout, roundabout, just to see where people are falling, if they wanna do more, or do they wanna start small? That's all, that's just basically what I'm asking.
Point of information.
Your question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Mr. Burt said in the beginning. You said something per site.
It may be.
Oh, just keep in mind, it could be higher with site.
It could be higher.
Improvements.
Yeah, the 12.6.
If you did the track and field, you know, if that was a preferred, it might be more like 14 million because of site amenities.
Counselor Bordelain, did you not wanna discuss this yet?
No, no, I mean, if this is the time for this portion, I'll take my other turn after. I just feel like it's hard for me to decide a piece. I feel like my heart is, we can say all these other things, we might not get ECS, we might not get that. We've always had an excuse not to do the field. I mean, we, meaning the town, not us as the counselors. At some point, we have to make a commitment to that high school and get it repaired. So for me, I am concerned about piecemealing it, but then putting other things as priorities to bond when the high school's been in disarray for as long as it has. So, I mean, if the consensus up here is to just do one for 13 million, I'm gonna take something. But I, I am concerned that the Fitch High School should be done in its entirety. I'm not sure that it can be piecemealed like that. I, I think we need more direction on that, so it's kinda hard to answer for me, so.
I'm just asking how much you wanna spend, basically, in the first year.
I'll wait to see what. I'll just wait, I, my heart is that the high school needs to be repaired in its entirety, but if we're not gonna get those, that agreement here, I would be okay with going whatever, whatever the majority wants. That's where I'm at.
What was the total for the high school?
37.2.
So you're 37.
I, that's not what I said. I said, I'm in support.
You said your priority is to do the high school as a whole.
Correct, but I didn't get my second term to ask my other questions, so I, so I'll abstain from answering right now. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
I'm looking at some, something between 33 and the 37 for the entire high school.
All right, Counselor Russ.
But it's gonna go to a referendum anyway, so we're not really making a decision. We're just making a decision of what goes to referendum, right?
Well, you're making the decision of what goes to referendum.
Yeah, but we're not gonna spend the money unless, unless the residents want us to.
You, you do have to also make sure it's affordable, though, to us before going to referendum, yeah.
Counselor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So pie in the sky, yes, I would love to spend, to pay for it all. That being said, I have shouted up and down about the Alice Reports, and we have 35% plus in our community who can barely afford what they have right now in bills. So, that being said, I, I look at how much we're going down every year. Thank you, Counselor McBride, for that. And I feel like my heart is at 14, because I would like to do the track and fields and take down the school, because if we demo the school, there's less that people have to do with the school, so we're saving money in that we don't have to heat it, et cetera, or take care of it. So that's where I'm at, 14, 14, 15.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you, I would love to do it all too, however, I don't think it's prudent to do that. I think the cost of taxpayer would be too significant. And I also think, construction-wise, it wouldn't be the way to go either. I mean, we demolish the entire campus, there'd be no place to practice. So I think the best approach would be a phased approach. And I think if you looked at, and 13 number is just an estimate on 4% a year, the financial advisor's gonna smooth that out over 20-year plan, so you could end up, it could end up being, you know, 800,000 dollars, because he or she is gonna put it into buckets on where there's bandwidth growth to pay it off over 20 years. So that's just a straight-line amortization, it may change. It's probably gonna decrease, actually. But what I think is prudent is if we come up with a plan around 13, 14, whatever that number is, in '27, and then possibly earmark or have a plan to do it again in '29, and maybe in '31, because as these payments decrease, I think we can, as a council, move forward that we are fully funding these plans, but we can't do it in all in one year, we're doing a phased approach. So I like the 13, 14, whatever that number is, and then have a plan that we're gonna continue on. Whatever, whatever this council, future council decides to do, there's a plan in place to accomplish it all without negatively impacting taxes. And, you know, again, I wanna point out that the fund balance has, as in my opinion, added, you know, added numbers there that we could potentially use to offset taxes.
Thank you, Counselor Gajewski.
I have a follow-up question. How much, how much would 37.2 be approximately? So it would be an additional 3 million annually, if we just times it by 13,000?
Would be 3 million annually, approximately.
3 million annually, so it would take us, we'd bite the bullet for roughly three fiscal years if we did the whole high school? Yeah, I'd do the whole high school at 37.2.
Mayor? Just wanna reiterate your point of, though, we could not afford 78%, 78% increases every year with the schools. I think you'd almost have to have some sort of, at least semi-commitment to, you know, how much the growth would be.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, where do you think you stand?
Honestly, I don't wanna go to referendum, but it sounds like the majority of the council wants to go ahead and do it. I don't think we can afford it right at this point in time. But, no, honestly, I don't think we can do it right now. But I understand the concerns, and if we have to, the 13, I'd rather not.
As a reassurance to you, if the bottom falls out of the economy, we can stop this before it goes to referendum.
Yes, but what are we doing for the CIF? What projects, see, this is what my question was before. What are we putting forward for the CIF, and then you're saying we're gonna do a referendum? We need to either be doing partial or nothing at all. I don't wanna split everything and try to figure it all out, 'cause we gotta give the people the right answer to say, oh, we're gonna say this is gonna go this way. We don't know if we're gonna get the SIF. Then we're gonna go to the referendum and say, oh, we're gonna try to go for a bond. Neither those, you're right, if it drops to bottom, we can't get them, then we just wasted the taxpayers' money. And we still have to pay for the advertisement of putting the referendum out, and we're on a deadline. That's my soapbox.
Okay, thank you. Point of information, your question?
So if we did this phased approach of 13, is that how it would be worded? Like, would we be writing some hard, like, priorities for whatever council's here to see the completion in the next 15 or 20 years when we finally phase it all in? Like, would that be, like, written somewhere as like, okay, that ball field's complete, bathrooms are complete, concessions? Like, would it, so when we're voting, are we just voting on the 13 and then it just freezes? Or are we voting it all on the referendum that we will be doing in a phased-in approach? Meaning we're gonna do a completion of the high school with the phased-in approach?
Well.
How, 'cause the wording to me, that like what I'm saying I'm agreeing to is a lot different. If I'm just saying, I'm agreeing to 13,000, and then we're just gonna go cold for a while, and then five years later, someone says, okay, let's do the bathrooms, I don't think I can support that. But if the wording states our goal is to complete the high school in a phased-in approach over X amount of time, that's a different thing I'm agreeing to, that's what I'm asking, that I'm trying to understand.
I can tell you, I can't, I can't speak for the whole council, but when I look at this and I see, and as I mentioned, especially in 2029, I mean, we can do something that would go out to bond and hit us in '27. It would go down to 1.9 the next year, which would be another million. We could do another 13 by then, but then we have a drop of 3.5 million, so we might be able to wrap it up by then. So me personally, I'm looking at it as, over time, starting something now.
Okay, am I able to take my turn now?
I, I haven't even taken my turn on this to say where I stand, so. Yes, what is your, you're changing your answer.
13 million, but for Claude Chester, because that.
Well, we haven't gotten, we're just talking money right now.
Yeah, I know, so 13 million.
I'll wait for my turn then.
All right, so I am also at 13 million, or approximately, not, I'm not gonna hold it to the penny here or anything. So there's six people that are looking, which looks like the majority are good with around, around 13 million. The next question is, what would you wanna do with that 13 million now? What is your priority? I'm just gonna go first. I would say the high school track, field, stadium. There might be, like, as Mr. Burt said, there might be a little bit more money because of site amenities and things that need to be taken care of. But let me ask, let's, I just have to ask a quick question. Do you think that there would be other things involved in that to increase that price? Like you said, a little bit of wiggle room with site amenities, but.
Well, we'll, we'll consult with, with Chad and see what he thinks. You know, if they say it's gonna be 14.5, and then I'll run that scenario, knowing about where you wanna be.
Okay, that's me. I'm at track and field, track, field, stadium. That it would be the, the bleachers, and whatever's in this green area that's in our picture. All right, Counselor Merritt, where would you, if you were, where would you want the 13 million to go towards?
Track, field, and stadium.
Track, field, stadium.
I think we have to reflect with the other communities and get, get in line with them.
I agree.
And I haven't been up there in quite a while, but I'm, I'm just amazed at the horror stories I hear.
Well, the field house looks the same. Counselor Bordelain?
Again, picking one, I don't have the information that we can pick that one, like, you know, based on the construction because of where they're putting everything, but I do think that's the center point of it. But my concern again is, or my question, is when we write this for a referendum, is it saying this is what we're doing, and we're gonna be doing a phased-in approach over the next eight years?
We can't put that in a referendum.
We need, I mean, I mean, I guess we need some commitment of like, are we gonna keep going?
That's a council, the council will change over. Then we may have another council next time around, you don't know, you can't, you can't commit to anything like that.
So I guess through, through you, to the town manager, is, is there some locking thing that we can say that this is our phased-in approach that we're pushing forward?
No, it can't be put in the referendum, and any, I mean, obviously, you could adopt a policy that the next council could just ignore or wipe out.
I mean, I guess, I, I mean, any improvement's better than every, any improvement, but I just think this is, we're cutting our speed, I don't know, it just seems. But I guess the stadium, the center point, I mean, that's, if that's the majority, I mean, I just, I don't know, piecemealing it to me is just hard to digest, that's all, 'cause I just don't see the completion.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino?
Claude Chester.
What, at Claude Chester?
The whole thing. If we're gonna do something, I wanna finish it. If we're gonna piecemeal the high school, you know, we can, we can do that at a later date. But if we do Claude Chester in its entirety, those fields will help out the entire community.
You're far away from your microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If we do Claude Chester in its entirety, those fields will help out the entirety of the community, whereas the high school will help out the high school community.
All right.
Which is great.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Russ?
I am going to say the track, field, and stadium, but I'm also gonna reiterate my push to do the school demo at the same time. I would like to also say with Claude Chester, I believe the multi-use fields were synthetic at 6,000 dollars, and if we are going to move forward with that, then I would like to have that discussion before we move forward with that.
Yep. Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I like the track, field, and stadium, and not just that I like it, I think, you know, I may be wrong, but I thought this was sort of the recommended approach from the consultants, I thought that was the highest. I don't know if it was recommended, but it seemed to be a lot of the opinion polls or whatever, that was the highest priority of what they recommended, like this.
There are safety issues and ADA issues with the, with the stadium, with the, the, yeah, with the bleachers and whatnot. And simultaneously, while Canton Frost was doing their analysis, the school hired an engineering firm to look at the stadium, and the assessments paralleled each other. I think the assessment made by the engineers for the Board of Ed, the price came a little bit higher, and they did a little bit more documenting of, of the issues with the, with the bleachers, and they are extensive.
Yeah, so I think that's my, I think that's a top priority, but I also like Counselor Russ's idea. If we were able to do 14 or 15, that school demolition that she recommended, I think makes a lot of sense to be able to use that area. So that would be my preference as well.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
I'm gonna say Claude Chester, because you may be able to do school construction for the high school athletic fields. You could do, possibly do two full projects of one. So Claude Chester.
Counselor Parker?
I have a question.
Your question?
Just for Mr. Burt, please. TBCCA, if they get the funding for their school, were they thinking of using Claude Chester?
No, they're fully, everything I've seen from them is locked in on their current location. Or do you mean temporarily, until they move? No, my understanding is that that, they looked at that, I don't believe that's, I don't think it meets safety standards for that. So they, so they were looking at piecemealing how they do, okay, we leave this building while we do this other piece on site. So no, I don't believe they're looking at Claude Chester.
If the athletics fields can be done under school construction, that would be great, then I'm gonna say, I'm actually gonna go with Claude Chester.
And Claude Chester has the best possibility of getting the SIF grant. Is that correct?
No.
Because it's the economic area?
I think we could make a case for either.
Where, the high school or?
Now, I'm not sure we should count, though, on getting the state funding for the high school out, but I don't know what the chances of that are through state construction, but my feeling is, I don't think that's likely.
But there's more of an economic driver down at Claude Chester, isn't that correct?
Yeah, we can make the case the other way, though.
All right.
I, you know, my worry about not doing the core issues at the high school is you could get negative votes from that and blow, and the whole thing could collapse.
All right, so that comes out to be five at the track, field, stadium, and three for Claude Chester. So do you have enough direction to sort of know what, which direction you're going to go?
Yes.
Okay, and then he'll come back with more information, and we'll have more discussions on it. That was just to give him direction on which way to go. It is 10 o'clock, we have this, is, is there consensus to go forward?
No.
Yep?
Yeah, those two items, so wait if you so please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion by Bordelain, second by Parker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes seven, I mean, eight to zero, to zero.
That's not a no. I'm for.
Oh, you were no? I'm sorry. Was there any other no's? I'm sorry.
It was quiet now.
All right, it is 10:07, we are adjourned for the evening. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.